11th, 2019. I think we're echo chamber a little bit here, but we'll work that out. We will start with the roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Sparza.
Present.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Arias.
Here.
And Council President Capriolio.
I am here. Thank you very much. Next will be the invocation, and we have Kevin, who's going to join us and lead us in that invocation. And after that, please remain standing, and we will salute our flag. Thank you, Kevin, for being here. The floor is yours.
God, we just thank you so much that you are here with us today. Thank you, God, that when we ask for help, you are there, ready to give it to us. And I thank you for each and every person that is here this morning, members of the community that will be honored today. Lord, all the members of this organization, this community, Father, who really want the betterment of this community, Lord. Thank you for the lawmakers that are here today, Lord. We just pray for your wisdom and grace upon them, Lord. And, Lord, all of us have one goal: to make our community better. Help us to all remember that as we debate the issues today. Lord, I just pray that we would hold on to compassion, and we would hold on to justice in the same hands, Lord. I just pray you'd help us to rule with compassion and justice, Lord, as we face the issues of our great city, Lord. And we just thank you so much for it. We pray these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Kevin. Before we get started on our agenda, I wanted to make a few comments. Last Thursday, I was unanimously elected as council president, and that's a real honor for me. I want to thank my colleagues for putting their faith and trust in me for the balance of the year. Last Thursday, I mentioned, I want to mention it again, I think, well, personally, I think it's a great choice to make me president, so thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you. And I think I'm the first Italian-American president of the council. And my Italian grandparents, they immigrated from northern Italy, 1921. And so they're above us today, and I think they're looking down on their grandson and smiling, hopefully. And I won't let them down, lead us accordingly. And I thank my noni and my papa. Next, I wanted to address procedures and policies. As a new president, I get to initiate some new things here. So my first goal and priority, and I think all of us, is the same goal and priority, it's civility and cordiality on the dais here. So I think, let's bring out the best in each of us, and let's bring out the best in the audience, and the participants of the different agenda items. So I encourage everyone to do that. I think we can really impact our community and lead by example and proceed accordingly. Next, when we do want to speak, up here, you don't see it, but there's computers and buttons and all that. So traditionally, if you wish to speak on an item as a council member, you push a button, it lights up the screen, and that enables me to recognize that person and have them speak accordingly. Usually, each council member will address the issue one time, and then that will proceed to a vote. And if someone calls for the question, we'll immediately go to that vote. So hopefully, we can expedite the process here and move things along. I want to bring up deadlines. If you don't have something on file at 5:00 Thursday, that would be today at 5:00, you will not make the next agenda. It's a rule I'm going to strictly enforce, because it's not fair to all those who want to read and become familiar with an item, and then have at the last minute rush the documents to us and expect us to be familiar with it, familiar enough to cast a vote that could really impact the community in our city of Fresno. So please, take the time to read the rules that we've instilled and accordingly follow those. Next, we want to address the consent calendar. Today will be the last day when we pull the consent calendar. If you have items you want to pull off of it and talk about, we're going to do that at 1:30. And the reason for that is, I'm kind of an efficiency guy. And what happens is, if the consent calendar may have 15 items, so we might have 15 directors, 15 staff members, and so forth, waiting while we go through numerous items on our agenda. So in my mind, that's about $18,000 an hour, that sitting here when they would rather be working at their respective positions and making things happen for Fresno. So with that in mind, if it's pulled, we'll hear it at 1:30, and then that gives the person who pulled the item an opportunity to speak with the sponsor of the consent calendar item and perhaps clear up any questions they may have. So I guess that's the attorney in me, and I see some attorneys in the audience that know what I'm talking about. So we're going to have a good time. It's going to go quickly, efficiently. We're going to show our cordiality, especially to you in the audience. So we'll get going, and I wanted to thank all of you for being here. It's going to be a great year for the city of Fresno. So next, we have approval of the agenda. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have several changes. The first is File ID 191391, which is approval of the minutes of April 4th. That's going to be continued until April 25th. Next, we have File ID 191361, which is Item 1C, Adopt Modifications to the City of Fresno's Diverged Compensation Plan Document, and that is being continued to April 25th as well. Item 4D, which is File ID 191438, Resolution Directing the Expenditures of Senate Bill I Funds on Economically Disadvantaged Census Tracks in Low-Income Neighborhoods in the City of Fresno is being removed from the agenda by the sponsors. There were some inclusions on the revised agenda, which includes Item 1E. There was an AAR that was omitted, and so we've added that. And on Item 1F, there also was an AAR that was omitted, and so we added that one. And the 1030 item in ordinance was omitted, and we added that one. And those are all the changes that I have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do any council members wish to make any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion? A second? A motion by Member Soria, a second by Member Chavez. Any opposition to this motion? Seeing none, passes 6-0. Next, are there any changes to the minutes of April 4th? Oops, thank you. All right, now we go to the fun part of the day, which all of you are interested in. And these are the ceremonial presentations. It looks like it's President Capriolio Day. Since we're going to do National Crime Victims, followed by National Autism Awareness Month, and then finish life portion with National Donate Life Month. So I'll be right down there. Give me one second, and if there's any issues, Vice President Arias, I'm sure can take care of it.
I will keep you. Council President, you have two minutes for all your presentations.
You know, that particular comment, that's because those that are critical don't understand the word brevity. So we're going to get a lesson in brevity today, not filibustering. So let's have everyone from Crime Victims Week, please come forward. Our new chief is here, along with the people that are very, very important to the probation department, many faces that I've seen each and every year for the past six years that we've done this. So we're here to acknowledge Crime Victims Ri... Let's strike that. Crime Victims Rights Week, where all the communities throughout the nation come together to bring awareness of victims of crimes. So it's our time to put a face, not only at a voice to the victims of crime, but also to honor the crime fighters that we have here that help each and every day with those unfortunate victims of violent crime. Serge, you like to come up? And our new chief?
Thank you, President Capriolio. My name is Kirk Haynes. I'm the Chief Probation Officer for Fresno County Probation Department, and we are very honored that the city council and all of you, thank you, for honoring the Crime Victims Awareness Week. It's something that our agency has been doing since 1975, starting under the leadership of our Chief Probation Officer, James Rowland. We bring comfort and guidance to victims of crime throughout Fresno County and, of course, the city of Fresno. And we have passionate, here today with me, some passionate, passionate victim advocates doing great work, where they walk people through some of the worst times that they will ever have to go through in their lives, whether it's through providing services to them or providing a helping hand as they go through the court process. And so I just want to say thank you publicly to all of these victim advocates for the outstanding work that they do, led by Probation Services Manager Karen Roach and our Division Director Joy Thompson. If you don't mind, if Karen can introduce the staff?
Absolutely. Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, President, and fellow council members. All these folks up here have dedicated their professional lives to helping those at their darkest times, as Chief stated. I would like to personally recognize the ones that are here today. I have a total of approximately 24 staff that are working with victims of violent crime that are impacted in the city of Fresno as well as Fresno County. So let me start going down the row real quick. I have Shirley Parvanian, Jeanette Miller, Jessica Munoz, Veronica Fabella, Cassandra Torres, Melinda Zavala, Victoria Gregorian, Sarah Thong, and my Division Director, Joy Thompson. And again, we thank you for your support and allowing us to be here today to recognize National Crime Victims Rights Week. We were able to hold our annual event last Tuesday, which we unveiled our yearly memorial quilt. Sadly, this year, we added 10 patches to that quilt. We've been doing the quilt since 1994, and we currently have 509 patches on the various quilts. So that event is very meaningful to those families that have been touched by crime. And anyone who comes to participate and support them, we appreciate it. And these advocates that work tirelessly, year after year after year, for that event is not for them. It is for them, but it's for the families that we service. So thank you for your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Unfortunately, that's a high number, but you also touch all the family members, their friends, and extended family. So your breadth is vast, and you touch so many lives. And I think crime statistics are low. Unfortunately, violent crime is up there. So because of you and your advocacy, we have many, many people that find comfort in their most trying of times. So thank you so much. And Madam Clerk, could you read the proclamation, please?
Whereas each April, National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity for an annual observance of the Fresno victims of crime. And whereas, under the guidance and direction of the Fresno County Probation Department, James Rowland Crime Victim Assistance Center, more than 8,000 crime victims were served in 2018, and historically, over $1 million in state compensation funds are received annually by victims of crime in the city of Fresno and Fresno County. And whereas, during the week of April 7th through April 13th, and throughout the year, the city of Fresno and Fresno County will join together to observe National Crime Victims Right Week, to reaffirm their commitment to respect and endorse crime victims' rights and address their needs. Now therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Bran and the Fresno City Council members do hereby reaffirm our commitment to respect and endorse crime victims' rights and address their needs during the National Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby commend the James Rowland Crime Victim Assistance Center for their unwavering service and proclaim the week of April 7, 2019, through April 13, 2019, to be National Crime Victims Right Week, echoing the commitment of honoring our past and creating hope for the future in the city of Fresno.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Congratulations. Thank you all again for what you do. Thank you so much. Thank you. I know you've got to run, because you've got people waiting for you, and it's okay. We understand. So thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Good to see you again.
All right. Thanks a million. Next, we're going to go to the autism... Oh, I'm having trouble today. Not a very good presidential start, but we're going to keep working on it. So this is Autism Awareness Month. So William, Nikki, can you bring all your team up here, and we'll talk about this? So autism affects nearly 1% of the children in the United States. That interprets to millions, millions of people, and children in particular. So this is the National Autism Awareness Month. It's an opportunity to recognize the contributions of individuals with autism and reeducate ourselves to understand and respond accordingly to autism. So one of... We talked a little bit earlier. So the airport's in my district, so the last time we all got together, we had, I think, about 30 families with autistic children. And they came to the airport, luggage, everything you do for a flight, but they've never been on a flight. And with autism, confinement is an issue, like the cabin of an airplane. So what we did was, we had all the kids and their parents come, sit in the waiting room, listen to all the things going over the loudspeaker, and jet engines outside and all that. These kids and families were fantastic. So from there, we boarded the plane. Everyone found their seat, calm, cool, collected. And then the airplane took off, not airborne, but drove around the airport for like a half mile with everyone in the plane. It was a huge success. We had photographs, everybody made a booklet. So if they ever want to travel and get to Disney World in Florida or wherever, they're totally prepared, because they can review that and see how fun and successful things can be. It was really, for me, a very moving experience. But enough about my airport, let's talk about autism.
Thank you, Councilman... Actually, I'm sorry, Council President Capriolio. And I've been to Italy, so I can pronounce that correctly. So I'll be brief up here, but just one thing that I just really want to stress. When I started in this field about 10 years ago, the actual CDC estimated that 1 in 122 people were born with autism. Now, 10 years later, we're down to 1 in 59. So as you can see, it's gone up drastically in the last 10 years, and that's partially because we have better tools to diagnose, but also, I think that more people are just being born with autism. So here at the California Autism Center, through our three outpatient treatment facilities, our 125 employees, we do very good behavioral therapy, six days a week, to try and help the community. And our goal as a company isn't really to expand that far out of the valley and to provide great services for people here. I believe that we have a great city, and people shouldn't have to go up north or down south to get great services. So this is our board, our team, and we are eight or nine of us up here, actually representing the whole company. But I do want to recognize our board. And so we have our finance and accounting manager, Arthur Anderson. We have our Treatment Center Director at our west facility, Valerie Ruiz. Our Treatment Center Director up in Merced, Melissa Altomirano. Our Director of Communications, Nikki Cernilia. Our Chairman of the Board, Gary Rushing. Our COO, Adam Rushing. Our HR Director, Nick De La Torre. And our Director of our central facility, Blanca Mendoza. So thank you very much, and we're very happy to be here, and thank you.
Well, it's a pleasure and an honor to do this, and it's something that we need to be aware of and acknowledge, and do our best to help people with the autistic factor in their families and lives. So thank you all for being here. We're going to read that proclamation right now.
Whereas the California Autism Center and Learning Group provides local families with a variety of services and education to help give them hope and peace of mind in the future. The California Autism Center has two Fresno locations, as well as a Merced location, to provide family support across the community. And whereas, the California Autism Center provides early intensive intervention and school-age intervention, as well as social skill groups that help develop social skills and emotional interaction for those up to 18 years old. Their compassionate training professionals provides the best possible care in warming and welcoming environments. And whereas, now therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Bran and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim and recognize the incredible service provided by the California Autism Center, and encourage all residents to learn more about the science of autism to improve early diagnosis, understand the challenges faced by the individuals with autism, and find ways to support those with autism and their family. Be it further resolved that we Mayor Lee Bran and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 to be National Autism Awareness Month in the city of Fresno.
Round of applause, please. Congratulations. This is your month. Enjoy it. Thank you, sir. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Keep up the good work, please. Nice to see you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Oh, yay. This is really, really fun. Jason and Marcela, could you come down? Today is National Donor Network Month in the entire country. So we're welcoming our fans and friends from the Donor Network here in Fresno. This is our chance to make a proclamation, not only to recognize the group's work, but to speak about the importance of donating organs to save lives. I was going to indicate that my license, I am a donor. I don't know that I'll have anybody that really wants my organs, but I'm willing to contribute and help out as best we can. So Jason, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Good morning, Council President, Council Members, Fresno staff and guests. We are honored and appreciative to be here today for this occasion. I'm Jason Bailey. I'm the Regional Director for Donor Network West here in the Fresno region. We, as was said, we are the federally designated OPO, or Organ Procurement Organization, for about 2/3 of California. So we appreciate this generous gesture. The need for organ and tissue donors is incredibly great right here in Fresno County alone. We have about 1,000 people on the transplant waitlist. Statewide, that number goes to about 23,000 people, and nationally, there are about 114,000 people on the transplant waitlist. So that need continues to grow every day, as about every 10 minutes, an individual is added to the waitlist. One additional statistic, about 22 people a day die while waiting for a life-saving transplant. It's very likely that some of you in this room have been affected by organ donation, perhaps as a recipient or as a family member who's been a donor, et cetera. So we, again, appreciate this opportunity. I think we also wanted to bring up Mr. Larry Salinas, Executive Director of Governmental Relations and Affairs at Fresno State University. So I'll turn it over. He's a great supporter of ours, and we appreciate his time here as well today. So Larry?
Great. Thank you, Jason, and good morning, Council Members. Larry Salinas, Fresno State. This is a very personal issue for me for a couple of reasons. One, my grandson, Austin, who will be five next month, thank God, is in need of a kidney transplant. And thanks to the Donor Network West and the great staff there, we've been able to promote donor organ awareness in the four and a half, almost five years that he's been alive. So we keep hoping that that transplant will come soon. The second issue and person that's near and dear is my colleague at Fresno State, Police Chief David Huerta, who was actually a donor organ recipient, double lung transplant this last year, and is still recovering and going through a very difficult time for him and his family. And so, as Jason noted, virtually everybody has someone or knows somebody that is in need of an organ transplant. So it's important, get that pink dot. Marcela has her pink dress to replicate the pink dot. But blue and green are the colors. And tonight, I believe, or at least early tomorrow morning, the Shahadi Tower at the Save Mart Center at Fresno State will be lit up for the rest of the month in blue and green. So if you get a chance to go by there in the dark hours, take a photo. I certainly will be there. But I want to thank the council for this recognition, and Council President Capriolio. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Larry. It's always a pleasure to work with you and this fantastic team. And can we get your names, please?
German Imesqua.
Marcela Corona.
I know you.
Brittany Gann.
Larry Salinas.
So thank you all very much for being here, and we'll read that proclamation and take some photos.
Whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, African-American, and Asian communities. And a single individual's donation of heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to eight lives, and donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 75 others. And whereas, Donor Network West serves as the federally designated organ procurement organization in North Central California and Northern Nevada, and works in close partnership with families, doctors, nurses, and coroners, and hospitals to connect donors to recipients. And whereas, when a life is saved due to someone else's precious gift of organ donation, there are no words to express gratitude. Still, we thank those who, in their lives, made the selfless choice to be an organ donor and hope to inspire new donors to save lives throughout 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Bran and the Fresno City Council members encourage all Californians to check yes when applying or renewing their driver's license or ID cards, or by signing up at donornetworkwest.org. Be it further resolved that we Mayor Lee Bran and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 to be National Donate Life Month in the city of Fresno.
Round of applause, please, for these fantastic people. Thank you. Thank you all so much. This is your month. Please enjoy it, and hopefully, we'll get a lot of people to get involved with donating. Thank you. Okay, next, we have Councilmember Luis Chavez, and he's going to honor some infamous... I mean, famous people that I'm looking at in that back row. Here you go, Luis.
Thank you. If we could have Professor Larson come on up. We've got a very special VIP person in the room today. And as politicians, we say that very often, but this time, I really mean it. He is a very influential, longtime educator here in the city of Fresno. I was actually his last cohort of students at Fresno City College before I was a Ram... Before I was a Bulldog, I was a Ram. Very proud of that. And I still remember the course at Forum Hall. I think it was 101. Had about 100-plus students in there. And a lot of those ears are a big blur to me, but don't read into things. I was a very studious student. But part of the... One of the most memorable memories I have was your course in there. And today, I said, you know what? We need to give Mr. Larson his own day, because of not just the work he did as an educator, but also the work he continued after he retired, which I don't really think you really retired, because you're on so many boards and committees, helping your community. And we wanted to make sure that we recognized that for him. But I'll never forget, one of the questions that he posed in the course was, "What makes us civilized?" And that's a question that I've tried to answer. I haven't figured out the answer yet, and we wrestle with that sometimes up here at City Hall. But that's something that guided a lot of the work that I did in the consequential roles. But I wanted to bring you today and have you have your own day. And I was reminded of that the other night when we were at an event, and the work and your impact in our community continues with the Don Larson Scholarship that was established for students in our community. And so with that, I wanted to bring you and give you your own special day, but I'll let you say a few words. And by the way, I love your bow tie. He's beginning to be known for his bow ties.
It's really dangerous to hand a mic to a schoolteacher. I want to thank you very much. I mean, I'm honored, but I'm honored, basically, because I represent a lot of people in education who do an outstanding job. One of the things that has always bothered me is, when I'm at a party or in a group, and someone says to me, "What do you do?" I said, "Well, I'm a schoolteacher." "Oh. Where do you teach?" I said, "Fresno City College." "Oh. You know, the two difference of the "Os" mean a lot to me, because I'll tell you, teaching at City College was an absolutely joy... absolutely wonderful joy for me in my life. But I want you to know, those people in kindergarten through high school are working their hearts out in this community, and they deserve every bit of recognition for what they do. And I basically am very proud this morning to represent them." You know, it's interesting, when I started teaching in 1954, believe it, it's just a while ago, I... They were hiring teachers with 60 units of college credit, because we were so short of schoolteachers. Well, I had a degree, and I was looking for a job. There were a lot of details involved in that. But anyway, I was hired out in Crowthers. In fact, when I signed the contract, my principal asked me if my mother needed to sign it, because I was only 20 years old. She didn't, and I taught, anyway. But I'm walking into a sixth-grade classroom of 32 students... But I'm walking into a sixth-grade classroom of 32 students. I have not taken any courses in education, nor have I student-taught. The last time I was in an elementary school classroom was when I was in elementary school. And, you know, they say, "Fools walk in where angels fear to tread." Well, I was one of those fools. But you know, as I think about it over the years, I look back and remember that there were people who made me able to do that on that day. Nellie Long, second-grade teacher, took a seven-year-old kid who had a devastating first grade. First grade is, what I remember most from first grade is that I stood at the blockboard and wrote with my right hand during recess because I'm left-handed. You know, I learned you never do that to a kid. Never do that to a kid. But Nellie Long straightened that out. Alberta Sanchez at Floyd Elementary School brought books for me to read and made sure I had things available because it was a little two-teacher school. Actually, we could go barefoot in May, which was really kind of nice. Junior high Florence Gillis taught us the Constitution. I mean, we really learned the Constitution. Unfortunately, that doesn't seem to be happening these days, but it certainly happened then. And then there are people like Harvey Loy, who taught math and Latin. And in our second year of Latin, he had us do conversational Latin. Harvey Loy also wore, Monday through Friday, the same outfit. And then we never saw it again. He was in a coat and tie, pressed, shoes polished. He looked great. And I've always remembered that as an example of how I should work in my job. Carolyn Lachey taught theater. She put on Pigmalian, for example. Mary Roy Kelso put on Martha, the opera Martha, which has fueled my interest and pleasure in that area. The person who stands out above all others is a man named Roy Taylor, who was coach at the high school in Kermin. And I was his manager. And when he left at the end of my junior year, my heart was broken. And he said, "Look, you've got all the coursework you need completed. Why don't you come to COS next year instead of going to high school?" And I changed my life. I went to COS a year early, graduated at 20, and started teaching in September of 1954. And in May of 1999, I retired, 45 years down the road. It was a pleasure and a joy to do. I'd like to introduce some people this morning. My daughter Lynn and her husband Dan Roth are here. My brother Phil Larson, actually, twin brother, as he says, we were roommates. And his wife Joyce, my friends Buzz and Faith Nitschke. The, I can't name all of you. The City College Foundation, State Center Community College District Representation are all right here in this group. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate your coming today. I mean, and there's another one of my students right over there on the Board of Trustees at State Center. And next to him, another one of my students, Rich Caglia. It's kind of interesting that I run into students everywhere I go. I think the last class that you were in was 256 students. It was one of my best classes. I had 256 students register. 250 completed the course that semester. It was an amazing situation. I thank you all for coming today. It's been a lot of effort. I mean, it's early in the morning, at least it is for me, but I'm retired. But I've still been involved. And, you know, there's a little saying at my church, "Please be patient with me. God has not finished with me yet." And I'm glad he's not because there are still things to happen in my life. You know, I'm basically a work in progress. I still want to see what I get to. Thank you very much.
I think we all know why Professor Larson was so memorable at the time. And I actually went back and checked, you gave me a B for the class.
I did not give him a B. He earned a B. All I was was a record keeper. I just put down what they gave me. And if you got a B, and with the number of students, I felt I can't remember what grades they got. But if you got a B, you earned a B.
Well said. Although, I'll check what John and Richard Caglia got afterwards for their grades. Professor Larson, the last time that we were student-teacher relationship, I always appreciated that you shook everybody's hand on their way out. I was proud to shake your hand that day, and I'm proud to shake your hand today because today, you really do deserve this award today.
Can we read the proclamation?
Whereas Don was born in San Francisco on September 5, 1933, and his family moved to Kermin, California, where he attended local schools. And whereas, Don was an educator in Fresno County for over 40 years, teaching sixth grade for two years in Carruthers, teaching high school in Kermin, and six years at Fresno Unified. And 35 years at Fresno City College as a large group instructor of history. And whereas, Don has been an avid supporter of local student athletes throughout his life, he has scored basketball games for 61 years at Kermin High School, McLean High School, and Fresno City College. And whereas, Don is an active community member, having served on the Fresno Grand Jury, Fresno Housing Authority, Economics Opportunities Commission, and District Four Assessment Committee, and is currently serving on the State Center Community College Foundation Board and has done so since retiring in 1999. And whereas, Don was named one of the 100 Stars for 100 Years during the Centennial of Fresno City College in 2010. He served as the co-chair along with Pete Mahis of the Capital Campaign for Old Administration Building on the Fresno City College campus. And in 2012, he was named Retired Faculty Member of the Year. And whereas, Don was a founding member and board chairman of Reading &amp; Beyond, an organization which empowers children and families to live productive, self-reliant lives for the past 20 years. Now therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Bran and the Fresno City Council do hereby proclaim April 11, 2019, to be Don Larson Day in the city of Fresno.
Well, congratulations, Professor Larson, and to your family as well. And Phil, it's good to see you've been an inspiration for many government leaders. So thanks to the Larson family and relatives and friends for being here. The next item of business is the consent calendar. Would any council member like to pull an item for discussion from the consent calendar? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Nope, okay.
Sorry, I have A1, 1A.
1A?
No states, House Miguel.
Anyone else? My screen is clear, so I don't know if anyone's punching up. To my right? No. To my left? All right. Do I have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar? Motion by Member Soria, seconded by Member Arias. Would any member of the public like to speak on any issue on the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. And can I have a motion to approve? We have that from Member Soria and Member Arias. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, passes 6-0. Okay, let's go to general advance, since we're ahead of schedule. Let's go to item 3A. Approve.
We skipped council reports and comments.
I thought you said brevity. Okay. Now, pardon me, colleagues. We'll go to council reports. And I don't know why my screen is not... Okay, now we've got it.
It's called user error.
Okay, request to speak, Member Esparza.
Yes, good morning. Just have a few updates, stuff I've been up to in the last week since we last met. On Monday evening, had the, no, actually, sorry. On Monday evening, I had the pleasure of meeting with Faith and the Valley Group, their local contingent over at Sacred Heart, full of active neighbors who live in the surrounding neighborhoods in my district. And, you know, I had the pleasure of meeting with them, having a small community meeting and hearing their concerns on behalf of them and their surrounding neighbors. This week, had the additional pleasure of having a second community meeting at Leavenworth with a group of active parents. They spoke to me about a lot of different concerns, the infrastructure around the school, not just around Leavenworth, but also Yosemite Middle School, which is right across Cedar from that campus. And looking forward to, you know, helping them and delivering for that area as well as we proceed with the SB 1 Discussion Funds. And last but not least, yesterday had the great, great privilege of being among, here in council chambers, all the different employees here at the city of Fresno who have been here for at least 10, 15, 20, I think, 30 and 40 years. So it was great to be here, celebrate with them and their families. They all got, came up one by one, the ones who were able to be present and got their certificate, took a picture with the mayor and the city manager. So congratulations to those City of Fresno employees. Like I said yesterday, to those employees who have been here 10 or 20 years, I hope they're here for another 10 or 20. And for those who have been here for 40 years, they're almost there to the finish line. Congratulate them. The actual last thing I had to say was that on April 22, as chairman, in my capacity as chairman of the School Liaison Subcommittee, I'm calling our first meeting. And so that's going to be here in council chambers at 6:00 PM on Monday, April 22. I chose a Monday because I think that seems to be the only weeknight where either council or one of the school districts is not meeting. So I've invited, per the School Liaison Act here at the city of Fresno, I did invite Central Unified, Clovis Unified, Fresno Unified, State Center Community College District, and of course, my two fellow members that are on the committee with me on behalf of the city of Fresno. So that'll be a public meeting, open to the public, a School Liaison Subcommittee meeting. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Member Esparza. Next, we have Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple different announcements. One, I want to thank a few folks. Last weekend, on Saturday, we had a neighborhood alley cleanup. So I want to thank the East Fresno Kiwanis Club and K-Kids, who did an amazing job in cleaning up around 22 alleys in the kind of Fresno High-Hamilton neighborhood area. There is a lot of alleys in the older part of Fresno that need a lot of attention. I'm hoping to see that if, you know, where there is opportunity to put resources, that we put some resources, just because it adds blight to the neighborhoods. The other folks that I want to say thank you to are Fresno PD Northwest District Captain Burke Farah and his team. They put together the West Shaw Estates Block Party, where they provided a number of community resources, information, job opportunities. And so I want to thank them for all the work that they're doing out there. In particular, the West Shaw Estates, we've had reports, you know, in the past, even from our asset team, the challenges that exist in this particular neighborhood. And we actually recently, just the other day, on Sunday, had a shooting there where someone lost their life, and it was related to domestic violence. And so the work that the captain is doing is really trying to combat not only the crime there, but any violence impacting families and in particular, our children. I also just want to make an announcement for a couple of things. So this Saturday at Quigley Park, we're going to have our second community meeting for the master planning of it. We are going to be starting at 10:00 AM, and then we'll take about an hour, an hour and a half to two hours to do the meeting, to discuss what we want to see in the park. And then we are going to be having a barbecue, free barbecue. So we want to encourage the families, children to come out. We want your input. And we want to make sure that we see you guys all out there. The Fresno Police Officers Association will be barbecuing. So I want to thank them ahead of time for partnering with us. And then lastly, just want to also announce that the California Community Colleges Fresno Town Hall and College Fair is happening on Tuesday, April 30, at West Side Church of God. It's going to be in the afternoon at 4:30. So hopefully, we can get our parents, students, educators, and community leaders to come out because we were, folks are going to be discussing improving access to college enrollment, removing barriers to success, and improving graduation and completion rates, which is a critical issue in our community. So I want to encourage folks to put that on your calendars, mark that date, and come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. The screen is clear, so I wanted to thank the city of Fresno, from Mayor Lee Bran to Brian to everyone. Why is that? Because Light Up Fresno, Light Up Fresno with the LED lights. We did that officially at 11:00 AM Monday morning at Vinland Park. It was really a lot of fun. It was my last journey, 40 feet in the air in a lift bucket and unveiling of the LED lights. So Fresno's going to be a bigger, better, safer place. We're going to save $1.6 million a year with the LED lighting. And PG&E is carrying that loan for six years, interest-free. So it's quite an event. It's fantastic for our city. Member Chavez was there, and he's bucket-friendly as well. And secondly, congratulations to all the employees for their awards that they received yesterday. It takes all of us together to make the city as great as it is and will be in the future. So congratulations. Last but not least, at 6:30 approximately this evening at Fresno-Yosemite International Airport, the 18th Honor Flight will be landing. And if you haven't been there for this event, it is absolutely heartwarming and gives you chills when you see these veterans who spent the last three days in Washington, DC, visiting all the memorials and getting the VIP treatment they so deserve for their service to our country. So they'll be coming in tonight. When the plane lands, they do a water arch from the fire department. The plane goes through the arch, then they deplane. It's really a great celebration. There'll probably be 400 people there. So we'd love to have everyone here and listening to us come down and participate and support these fantastic veterans. Thank you very much. We have some cards here. They seem to be addressing the 2 o'clock matter, so we will not be calling that until 2:00 PM. So if you want to come back then, we'll pull these cards, and you'll have your opportunity to speak on that item. This is the Panhandler signage issue that's coming at 2:00 PM today. So your cards will not be called until 2:00 PM. Do we have the personnel people here?
Yes, if yes we do, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to item 1A. Let's pull from the consent calendar, Member Miguel Arias.
As I'm here and available for any questions, the report is in front of you.
Can you explain for the record what the item is?
I'm sorry?
Can you explain for the record what the item is?
The item is to provide for court standby for supervising criminal investigation technicians.
Is this for the management unit of the labor groups?
Actually, this was initiated originally on the part of the department who wanted to provide that for this. We did then go to the labor group, ask if they were interested. They were, so we met and conferred, and we came up with what you have in front of you.
Are we currently in negotiations with the same labor group?
No, we are not. That contract, I think, is up next year.
Next year. So this is outside of our normal negotiating process?
It is, it was a side letter of agreement to the MOU. It's not something that's necessarily unusual for the process.
Has the council been briefed on this negotiated proposal in closed session before getting put on the agenda for approval?
No, we did not go to council in closed session.
Colleagues, for the record, any proposal related to negotiations with any of our labor groups, I think the council should be briefed in closed session, given that negotiations before we're asked to consider it in public. Given that it wasn't done, I can't support the item today.
Well, do we, is there any support for tabling it? Or do you want to hear it today, colleagues?
I would support tabling it and bringing it back in the next meeting, having a closed session prior to taking a vote.
To my left? To my left, Member Brettafield.
City Manager, why is this not done in closed session?
Jeff, can you come up to the podium for a minute? You want to kind of talk about our process and the types of things that we do take in the closed session for, and those that we don't? And, and tabling this item is one thing, but everything is already lined out in the staff report. So if you do want to go into closed session, I'm fine with that, but all the information is already available to you here. But Jeff, do you want to go ahead?
So typically, we will be going into closed session relative to significant issues such as a successor MOU, where we are extending the terms and conditions of employment and making a variety of changes relative to a bargaining unit or multiple bargaining units. And at that time, seeking the approval of council. This, this is viewed as a relatively routine item, which provides for compensation similar to other individuals who operate in a similar capacity in terms of being available on a standby basis. We have individuals, the supervising crime scene technicians, who are currently responsible for standing by so that they can respond to court. At this point in time, we are not in a position to provide them with compensation for that standby, because we do not have such a provision in the Professional Employees Association MOU. And since it was consistent with how we are handling that elsewhere, we felt it was appropriate to bring forward in terms of a side letter on the consent calendar, rather than a need to go into closed session.
So, I was just going to say, so what you're saying is this is not part of an ongoing negotiation with this union. This is, in a sense, rectifying something where people are providing additional work that's not being compensated, and you're correcting for that. It's not part of the negotiations of the agreement with the City of Fresno. Is that accurate or not?
That is accurate with one caveat, if I may, that the, any side letter agreement amends the MOU, and it's in addition to that document. So it would be as an appendix to that until such time that we negotiate a successor MOU, and we meld that into the agreement.
Okay. So in terms of the council weighing in on that, it could say yea or nay right now, and say, no, we don't support this, or we want to review this as part of a, an ongoing negotiation down the road?
It is, the council's prerogative to, to determine whether or not they wish to approve it at this time.
Okay. I mean, I understand the concern that you have, a council member. I mean, I think all issues related to the finances should come before the council. I'm less concerned about this one particular item, only because it, as we, you know, discussed, it seems like it's rectifying something that people are providing some work, and they're not being compensated for, and it's being asked to compensate for that. In general, I completely agree with your feelings about all, all issues related to the agreement should always come before the council. So I understand exactly where you're coming from, but I think this may be a bit different than that. But I'm open to listening further.
Thank you. Next person that's punched up is Member Asparza.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. I appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
As you know, I've given you folks clear direction about negotiations, kind of a broader con, a broader kind of perspective. But this, this is pretty minor, and the paperwork is here. I want to support our employees. So I don't mind taking a vote on this today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Arias for the second time.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the fact, and I don't think that my objection is to the content of what's being proposed, my objection is to the process. The Labor Management Act specifically outlines a process for any changes in the labor agreements. They're supposed to come to the council in closed session, outline all future costs of any changes to labor agreements. This item simply tells us the cost for this year. It doesn't outline the projections for future years. Secondly, to my council colleagues, the challenge for me is setting the precedent. If we start approving side letters that have one-year costs only represented, that as we're in the middle of negotiating with multiple labor groups, we're not going to have a full picture of the total cost of any of those changes. So I, I do recognize that these employees are doing work. You want to recognize that work. We value that work. But we do have to honor the process outline in the Labor Management Act so that we have the full scope of the picture. I, I do believe you'll get support from the council when it comes back, but I do feel that we should have a conversation in closed session to understand the full scope of the proposal before us.
Screen is clear. Is there a motion?
Well, I'd like to-
Member Soria has just punched up.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to, I agree with both of the arguments on the table. I know that things may seem minor, but I also understand, and maybe routine, but again, it's the establishment of precedent. I think for the most part, we've kind of stuck with the Labor Management Act and its process, and I think that we should honor that. So I'd just suggest that we table, we bring it back. You know, I'm likely supportive, I'm very supportive actually of, of it, but I think that I would like to honor that process.
Okay, the screen is clear. Is there a motion? I have a motion to table. Second, by Member Soria, those in favor of tabling, say aye. I have two ayes. Those that are opposed, nay. I have four noes, so it fails for lack of a majority. I'll make a motion to approve that particular item. Second, by Member Chavez, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have five yays, one nay, passes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So now we're going to go to the 10:00 AM item, timed, right on time. This is a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy, levy a special tax regarding the City of Fresno community facilities. That's 10:00 AM scheduled, council hearings and matters, number one. Public Works, Mr. Benelli, thank you for being here.
Good morning. Andrew Benelli with Public Works Department. As you stated, this is a public hearing. It's for a community facilities district. This is for a new Lushwab Tire Center on Neese Avenue. Staff is recommending that you approve this after public hearing.
Thank you very much. Anyone in our community that's here today would like to step forward and give us their opinion on this, please do so. Start with your name. Seeing none, we'll come back to the dais. Is there a motion? I don't know which district this is. Motion by Member Soria, second by Member Chavez. Is there any opposition to the motion? There is none, passes five zero. We have, I didn't see, sorry.
Sorry.
Member Arias did punch up, so sorry I missed you.
Staff, can you just explain to us in layman's terms what we're doing here with this item?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
Can you just explain to us in layman's terms what it is that the item proposes to do?
Yes, I can. This is a, a new Lushwab Tire Center. They enter into a community facilities district, which is an assessment that they pay each year on their property tax for the maintenance of the curb gutter and sidewalk in front of their building, and for the streetlights in front of their building. They, they've signed the ballots, are in support of the CFD.
So in future years, they would be paying into a fund to maintain those streets, curbs, and gutters and lights?
They do. All of our new commercial and residential properties do enter into CFDs to maintain the streets and pay for the streetlight bill.
What about industrial properties?
They also enter into them, depending on where they're located in town. The core part of the city do not enter into CFDs, but all of the new growth area are included in. We have two different, primarily two different CFDs. One is for residential, one is for commercial industrial. This is CFD nine, which is a setup for commercial properties and industrial properties.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
I thought I said six zero on that last vote. If I didn't, please indicate six zero supporting that. So now, we have three minutes. So let's do, if we can, Item 3B, actions relating to updating the water conservation measure. We did vote on it, yeah, six zero, thank you. Public Utilities. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Council President, Council Members, Mike Carvahal, Department of Public So I have a brief presentation that supports this item. So before we get started, just want to take a minute and thank each of you for, and your staff, for making time available to meet and provide an update on the water conservation All right, so my staff have prepared a brief presentation, and with that, I'll review the University of Chicago Pilot Program, the key takeaways learned from that study, as well as the post-pilot impacts. I'll cover DPU's response to those impacts and the refocused efforts to achieve our water conservation goals, and outline our next steps with your support of the recommended action items at the end of the presentation. So before I jump into the pilot program overview, I just want to take a minute and recap the activities that brought us here today, some of the decisions that have been made that kind of led up to this point. Council adopted some recommended changes to the water conservation regulations in October of 2017, and that was to achieve compliance with Senate Bill 814 that requires urban retail water suppliers to establish excessive water use ordinance by January of 2018. And in February, the Water Division migrated to the Badger Meter Company's Advanced Metering Analytics Software System that supports the ion water application and enables our customers to access their water usage daily on an hourly basis. And we initiated the transition to the automated conservation enforcement with the kickoff of the pilot program in July of 2018. The goal of the pilot program was to determine which enforcement strategy would achieve conservation goals with the lowest fine burden by comparing visual to automated enforcement strategies with varying fine structures. So while the pilot program was only in effect for about three months, there were a few key takeaways that I think should, you know, should be considered going forward. Takeaway number one, utilization of available technology through automated enforcement significantly improved water conservation compared to visual enforcement. From 2017 to 2018, customers with visual enforcement increased their water use by 3.6% or about 579 gallons compared to automated enforcement customers. Looking at takeaway number two, over 24, 2,400 water conservation notices were generated during the pilot period for customers in the automated enforcement group. That was to be compared with about 20 notices for the visual enforcement groups. So that shows the efficiency of the meter read system compared to water conservation representatives going out in the middle of the night and conducting visual patrols throughout the neighborhoods. Of those customers who received a first notice in July, 65% had no violations the following month, and then only 10% received a third fine. You know, when we can make contact with our customers, we generally have a positive response, and compliance is high. So that was a key takeaway for us. Takeaway number three, you know, reduce fines. In review of the average daily customer use, fine discounts had a lesser effect on conservation as compared to the three usage thresholds, which were 300, 500, and 700 gallons per hour. There was a matrix that was utilized during the pilot program. And takeaway number four, during the pilot period, call volume averaged almost 3,500 calls per month with customers in the automated enforcement group. This group was about seven times more likely to conduct, to contact water conservation. So this was important, as our customer service staffing levels did not match the incoming call volume. In October, when the pilot program concluded, 100% of single-family customers were on automated enforcement. So during the pilot program, 45% were actually on automated enforcement, the remaining 55 were visual enforcement. Once the program concluded, 100% went on to automated enforcement, and the call volume spiked to about 7,500 calls. And conservation field staff were reassigned at that point to assist with the incoming calls, resulting in a moratorium on fines that was implemented on November 1st. So in response to the moratorium, key staff have evaluated the pilot results, the water conservation program as a whole, and identified three water conservation goals. Number one, continue to meet the Urban Water Management Plan 2020 conservation goal of 247 gallons per capita per day. Our customers are doing a great job of conserving. We are exceeding that target on an annual basis, and right now, we are right around 205 gallons per capita today. So a great job by our customers to conserve water. Comply with all local and state laws and regulations, and deliver professional, courteous customer service, and water conservation education and outreach to the public. So with these goals in mind, a number of changes to the water conservation regulations have been identified, are now recommended to achieve these goals. We have summarized them here for presentation purposes. Number one, in response to customer and city council feedback, we recommend a simplified outdoor water use schedule, which consists of one day from the period of November to March, and three days during the period of October, April through October, during Phase Two of the water conservation, the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So Fa, Phase Two was the one that had the, the, the multiple changes throughout the year. It went from one day to two days to three days, and then back down. It matches our climate very well. It's a burden on our customers, though, to constantly be changing their, their schedule, updating their, their timers. And so we appreciate that feedback, and we've responded by simplifying that, that schedule in Phase Two, which is where we will most likely remain at, most consistently within our contingency plan. Number two, we've extended morning outdoor watering hours to allow permitted use, water use up until 10:00 AM, before it's 9:00 AM. Some of the feedback was, we want more time during the day, during the morning hours, to go out and conduct some of our watering. We've adjusted that to allow that watering up until 10:00 AM, and then again, after 6:00 PM on permitted watering days. Number three, we updated the excessive water use definition so that the threshold adjusts based upon the stages of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. We provided an allowance for one day a month of non-compliance use, and that accounts for customers that have an inadvertent error, a leak, some other anomaly. And we've increased water, the water use threshold up to 400 gallons, previously 300 in Stage Two of the contingency plan. That allows our customers some additional flexibility in how they use water. Number four, a 50% reduction is recommended to the fine schedule for incidents of water waste. Number five, we have clearly defined long-term exemptions, or more clearly defined those long-term exemptions for properties with multiple addresses or landscaped areas, two acres or larger, and short-term exemptions for new lawns, medical use, or other bona fide use, as determined by the water conservation supervisor. Number six, we streamlined the appeals process to be consistent with other city policies and regulations. So in review of the conservation program, it became clear that while the program has provided great customer service, education, outreach, there lacked a defined operations plan that supported this transition to automated conservation enforcement. So now we have a conservation, comprehensive operations plan that's been drafted, and it contains a phased implementation plan going back to automated enforcement that focuses on the fix, not fine approach. It also focuses on the worst offenders, so that was some of the feedback we got. You know, let's focus on the worst offenders, and let's, let's take the biggest step by, by focusing there on achieving our conservation goals. And it also requires enforcement levels to align with staff availability to provide the customer education, the outreach, and, and most importantly, to get out in the field, contact our customers, and help solve the mystery and get them on track in terms of their water usage. So to make sure our customers are fully informed, we have extensive education and outreach messaging that will be provided in multiple language. It will take place in the upcoming year. We will utilize various marketing vendors and platforms to push that message out. And the primary messaging outreach initiatives include general, general water conservation messaging, including the Know Your H2O Tips that help our customers better understand the water use regulations. Will include water advertising campaigns to support the outdoor water use schedule and excessive water use limits, increase awareness on the ion water application, water use permit availability outreach. So we'll talk about that, make sure they understand that if they need a water use permit for draining their pool, special activity, they can reach out to us, and, and we can make sure that that's flagged in the system. And five, we are, we're currently researching the addition of a water use comparison data dashboard that we can add to our water portal. So as a customer receives an incident, they get a notice, they can log into our portal where they, where they can see those incidents. Some of the feedback we got is we, customers want to see how they're performing against other water users. So we're looking at adding that information to that portal so we can identify those gold star customers who are actually conserving water, and we want to make- make that information available to them as well. So what's the plan moving forward? Going forward, our next steps include kicking off our education and outreach while continuing to send courtesy notices to customers, utilizing the automated enforcement system for a minimum of one year. So no fines during this one-year period. This will allow customers to fully understand their water use while staff will validate the performance of these automated systems. So a chance for them to get up to speed, a chance for us to make sure our systems are working as planned, work out any issues together, a planning process for us to make sure this system is going to be effective going forward. We'll maintain the status quo for visual enforcement regulations. This is going out. Those items where there may be consistent runoff, broken sprinklers, that sort of thing, those visual enforcement regulations will remain in effect, including fines as necessary. And implementation of the automated enforcement, including fines, would then commence in May 1st of 2020 using the phased approach that's outlined and identified in our operations plan. So to put this all into motion, we need your approval of the following action items: An ordinance amending section 6-501 and 6-520 of the Fresno Municipal Code; A resolution amending the Water Shortage Contingency Plan; A resolution to amend the Master Fee Resolution adopting the new schedule of fines; and an addendum to the Negative Declaration Supporting Environmental Assessment EA 17-014. Thank you for opportunity to provide this presentation, this update. Look forward to your questions, your comments.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So anyone in the public that wishes to come forward and comment on this matter, please come forward now. Seeing none, back up here. First on the list is Member Chavez.
Thank you, President. Mike, thank you for meeting with me, I think it was last week or the week before. Appreciate the information. I do have a couple of questions, and I read through your presentation, but my laptop went down right now. So kind of walk me through what this would look like implementation-wise from staff, you know, given the situation that occurred a while back in the flood of calls we received. So say, you know, a water user goes over their limit, which we've now adjusted, right, the threshold of what that is. When would they actually start receiving a penalty under this proposal, like the fine is an actual penalty?
So right now, what we are proposing is no fines until May 1st, 2020. So that allows us a year to run the system and send out notices to our customers to inform them about their water use and how they, going forward, would be subject to occurring or to receiving an incident for excessive use. So we're going to push that information out, we're going to run our systems and make sure they work. In May of 2020, we will then, customers would then be subject to a penalty. They do get one free incident for non-compliant use during the month. And on top of that, our phased implementation plan is to focus on the worst offenders. So we have a defined amount of staff available to go out and provide these services out in the field, which is, you know, send out the notice, customers can contact us, we want to get out there and help them understand what the issue is and why they receive the notice, and that means conducting audits if needed in terms of their landscape, helping them set timers, looking for additional ways to conserve water. So we provide those services, and our goal is to help them solve that mystery and not fine them. And so the phased approach is during this next year, collecting that data and understanding how many of our customers are exceeding that threshold and finding the worst offenders, meaning those who have a high incidence on Mondays. Nobody should be watering on Mondays. We focus there first. We're not going after somebody who had a bad day, went 4:10 in an hour, and, you know, we don't want to spend our time on that person. We want to focus on somebody who is consistently exceeding the threshold that gains us the most impact in terms of achieving our conservation goals.
So currently, what has staff developed as far as the criteria for triggering the habitual water waster, so to speak?
So we've got about six steps in our operation plan, which focuses on Mondays. It focuses then on those customers who have, you know, more than a certain number of incidents during the day, those customers who have the highest use of water, meaning they have a leak. And we keep moving through those phases. If we can't get through one without and still respond to those, we're not moving to the next step.
Is that criteria included in the packet?
It's not included in the packet, it's defined in our operations plan, so it's like a standard operating procedure. We're onboarding the new water conservation supervisor.
I'd like to see those, and I think my colleagues would like to see those as well. That would be helpful for this. So just so we're clear, so we're not going to be issuing any fines until May 2020. However, we will be issuing notices that they've gone over and above their water use.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right, so we're running the system just like we would. We will be sending out those notices, but we will not be, you know, customers will not be incurring fines. So we want to understand what are the number of fines going out, what's the call volume going to be like, and what's our ability to get out there and provide those services?
That criteria, I think, is going to be key because I think we get the calls from constituents on, hey, you know, we've had this notice sent. As you recall, last time, there was quite a bit of calls from residents with that. So, you know, I'm open to supporting it. I'm a little bit nervous about this process because of what happened last time, but I'm open to hearing suggestions from my colleagues.
Yeah, if you'd like, I can run through the current phased approach. Okay. Okay, so number one is Monday incidents. So Monday's the single day in which outdoor water use is prohibited, so that's where we would focus, number one. Number two, five to seven days per week with excessive water use incidents. Number three, 10 or more incidents in a month. Number four, high exceedance of excessive water use threshold. Number five, excessive water use on an incorrect day. And lastly, would be somebody who watered on the right day but got the wrong hour. That's going to be the very tail end. It's going to be a long time before we actually get to that point.
And how many gallons, how many gallons per, is it gallons per minute? That is a threshold, is it 300?
400.
400 gallons per minute.
400, non-watering day or outside your watering hours. So previously, that was 300. What we've done is bumped that up in Phase Two, it's to 400, so that's a pretty big bucket of water to utilize during an hour.
As you know, especially in certain neighborhoods in southeast, we have these old, big lots that have a lot of landscaping. How are we accounting for properties that have traditionally a larger lot than, say, a newer development with more drought-tolerant landscaping?
So all lots would be subject to the watering schedule. On your permitted day, you have about 16 hours to water your landscape. There is no limit during those 16 hours. You can water your landscape as long as it's not running down the road, it's not running off of your property, as long as you're utilizing it there on your property, there isn't a limit. It's only on your non-watering day or outside of those watering hours. So that's number one. In terms of a lot that is unique in some way in terms of its landscaping and it has more than two acres of landscaped area, that customer could come in and ask for an exemption to the watering schedule. It doesn't mean that they don't have to conserve, it means that on an annual basis, they have to have a defined reason as to why they can't meet that schedule. They must have a conservation program that's developed that achieves water conservation goals, that's reviewed by our department, our water conservation supervisor, and that would, could potentially be approved on an annual basis. It does not automatically renew. There are a very limited number of properties that could actually achieve that in some way. Most properties, I think we have about, we did, we looked at it, and there are about 200 parcels that are actually residential that have, that are two acres or larger. And of those, predominantly, the majority of those all comply with our watering schedule. There's probably only a handful of them that would even consider doing that. And so we'd have to make sure that they are achieving conservation goals within their property.
You know what I'd like to do, I'd like to propose this for my colleagues, before we start issuing actually, actual fines in May of 2020, if you could come back and kind of give us a snapshot of what that data says before we authorize actually sending out fines. That would give me a better comfort level.
We could do that.
Thank you.
Next, I punched up his member, Brettafield.
So May 2020 is when this would start in terms of the actual fines. In the meantime, letters will be sent out notifying people who are violating some of the provisions we have in here in terms of water conservation.
Yeah, under the phased approach.
Under the phased approach.
Right, so it's not going to be like it was last time where it was like throwing a light switch. This is a phased approach that makes sure that we can respond to those customers.
Okay. And you have enough staff to respond where we ran into this problem, you know, the light switch went on, we got all these complaints, you weren't able to respond, you don't envision that kind of a problem?
That's why we have this clearly outlined approach that allows us to take incremental steps, so we are monitoring that. We know how many notices are going out, we have a predetermined expected call volume, and we have services available, staff available to go out and respond to those requests for service.
If I might add, also, we're going to relook at the customer service process in terms of having the one call center be the first call that goes out on those initial letters, kind of a triage system, so that the water conservation team is answering those more complex questions, troubleshooting, so that should help with the volume.
Okay. And you said the customers have been doing very well. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that, Mike?
Right, so we are required as an urban water provider to develop what's called an urban water management plan every five years. Under that plan, we have to have specific water conservation goals. So we have a defined base period where we looked at water use. During that base period, the gallons, the average gallons per capita per day was 309. And in 2015, the goal, the state required goal was a 10%, I want to say it was a 10% reduction to that, to that usage. So that would be, let's see. So the 2015 was 90% of the baseline, 278 gallons per capita per day, and 2020 goal is 80% of the baseline, which is 247 gallons per capita per day. Right now, we are calculating, based upon 2017, 2018, we are right around 205 gallons per capita per day. So we are, we're doing a great job. Some of the things that influenced that, one, greater awareness, two, the threshold, three, very significant drought that occurred in 2015 that really kind of dialed things back.
Okay, well, that's great. And I also appreciate the scheduling change because I think it is more clear, less confusing. We don't want to confuse our customers as we're trying to help them conserve, so I think that is very helpful, too. So this will come back in May 2020. As Councilman Chavez says, you'll come to us before then, write us the data, how things are going, how things have gone, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then we may, and I guess we can talk about this as a council at that time, when the program does get implemented, we may want to determine a timeline of how long we have this implemented before we then get some additional data to see, has it been working? But that's something I think we can talk about at that time before it comes back. So I appreciate it. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. Couple of questions. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me and go in depth on what you guys are proposing today. I did want to ask just a couple of follow-ups. So one, I had asked about the JP's marketing plan. I still haven't received the plan. I think Cheryl mentioned that she would follow up and send it to me, because remember, one of the things that I'm interested in is the outreach and education portion of it. So I get that this plan's going to be out and folks are going to get noticing, but I think that we need to do a little bit more of a robust kind of PSA campaign. And I did suggest to you guys that you guys should use the trusted leaders, and if we can be helpful, you know, I know I speak Spanish, especially for the Spanish-speaking community, you know, I could help in terms of the education portion of it, and I would, you know, be happy to do whatever I can. So just wanted to kind of touch base on that. Can we get a copy of that marketing plan? And I wanted to see how you guys plan to outreach to the specific groups that don't likely, or don't speak English, so maybe the Spanish speakers among and Punjab.
Right, so, yeah, that was great feedback. We appreciated that, kind of opened the door to some new opportunities. So we've taken that back, we're looking at how we can work that into the current plan. We still are in development with JP Marketing on this, so we're really looking for a go before we invest all the dollars in developing that plan. We do, you know, look forward to sharing that information with you, getting that feedback, and how we can best get the information out there. Obviously, we want to make sure that this program is successful, and if you guys can be a part of that, you know, and helps us, you know, together, working as a team to answer customer questions and to make sure that we're achieving our goals here.
Yeah, so that was one. The other thing was also, wanted to ask about the distinction between having sprinklers and then folks that handwater. Do you believe, you guys are the experts, do you believe this plan kind of addresses that issue from folks that only have the ability to handwater? For example, myself, I live in an old neighborhood, and so I have to do a lot of, I have to do handwatering.
Yeah, I think it addresses it in a couple of different ways. One, we've increased the threshold to 400 gallons in an hour, so customers have a little more flexibility in terms of their handwatering and being able to utilize that higher threshold to spread out some of their watering throughout the day. It also allows additional hours, so if you're out there in the morning or in the evening, you have some additional time to get that done. So I think the plan does address that for those customers.
Okay, perfect. And then the other thing I wanted to just kind of ask, we have some incentives to do drought-tolerant landscaping or encourage that. And I mentioned to you that probably majority of the folks that can take advantage of that have a little bit more disposable income, and I think the folks that could benefit from the actual switching to maybe a more drought-tolerant landscaping probably are unable to access these dollars because they can't upfront the cost. Just hoping that as you guys move forward in terms of trying to implement these conservation policies, that we get creative as to how we adopt a program that's going to help everyone regardless of ability to pay. So figuring out a plan so that they can also access those dollars. I'd be curious, actually, from your guys' department or division, to get the data as to who's applying and where are these homes at and who's really benefiting from these available incentives. And I think that goes in line with the, I don't know if we still have like the washer incentives, so the other appliance incentives. So I'd like us to do an analysis and incorporate it so that we're looking at, do we have the best program out there that's going to service everyone?
Right, yeah, so we've taken that under consideration. I think that was, you know, that was great feedback. You know, the rebates are separate from this program, but, yeah, that's a great message. Those rebates do require customers to provide an upfront cost, meaning you got to go buy the washer before you get the rebate, and if you don't have that money, then you're, you know, then you're not eligible for the rebate, obviously. So looking for those opportunities, providing that feedback to our state partners who make this funding at times available, so that, you know, maybe we can further offset that cost to make sure that all of our customers, regardless of their customer class, income levels, can, one, achieve those rebates, and then, two, it helps us further reduce water usage.
Have we looked at like entering into some agreements with some of the appliance businesses around here to maybe have some sort of agreement that if we partner with them? So have we thought about something creative rather than just a rebate where folks have to go purchase it first and then get the rebate? Have we explored any of that?
Yeah, I can't say whether we have or not. I mean, I don't think some of those programs exist at this point, but that's some feedback we could take back to some of the funding partners at the state level and see what we can do to, you know, collaborate and make sure that Fresno, you know, just recognizing, you know, our household income levels and our customer class as compared to other parts of the state, you know, make sure that we're able to fully access some of those dollars and bring them here.
Perfect. If that's something that we can achieve through our division and you feel that it needs a policy change at the state level, I'd be happy to help. feel that it needs a policy change at the state level, I'd be happy to help with that, talking to Senator Melissa Hurtado or our assembly members, that could maybe help us navigate if that's a barrier from the state, but if we can get creative in the interim, where we can enter into some agreements with some local businesses here where folks don't have to necessarily front the cost, because we want to get those dollars out there anyway to make sure that we are meeting some of these conservation goals. So just some food for thought, and I hope that you guys take, you know, some of this under consideration as you guys are developing a plan that is inclusive of all folks.
Great, thank you.
Member Sparza?
Yeah, Mike, thank you for going through this in great detail with me in my office. Just wanted to say thank you for putting in a lot of thought, and this policy seems to be a lot more user-friendly, a lot more customer-friendly. You've shown a propensity to be flexible, and as this is implemented over time, I hope you continue that flexibility, right? Seems like everything's pretty airtight, but there's always unforeseen unintended consequences, so hopefully as some of those weaknesses are potentially exposed, we're open to bringing that back and and making sure it's perfect for our customers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Sparza, next is Member Arias for the second time or third time, I forgot.
First today, thank you. Quick question, are we in any way finding department, city departments that are letting water run down the street or going over the allocation? Are we holding ourselves to the same accountability standards as we hold residents?
We do hold our departments to the same accountability, meaning they must follow those watering schedules, or if they're, if they don't have an address, or it's a property that has multiple addresses, then there needs to be a program in development. And so generally, we get a good response if we get something in that says something's broken, we generally get a good response, you know, in terms of being proactive and getting out there ahead of time, I think there there might be some opportunities to to improve that, but once we get that that Fresno request, we're able to work with that department and and resolve the situation.
So to be clear, do we find departments who are letting, who are violating our water regulations?
I'm not aware of any fines that have been issued for city departments.
Thank you. My other concern in this proposal is I, you know, I think we have one case in particular in West Fresno on MLK and Church where we have city trees that have been damaging the water lines of residences' homes. The, there's, nobody has the money to remove the tree or replace it, the resident got a six hundred dollar bill that she can't pay, she's not using that level of water, they've identified that the source of the leakage and the damage is a city tree. We're having to pay from our infrastructure dollars, the five hundred dollars to remove the tree because it's not paid for by your department or any other city department. How are we going to deal with those kind of cases where our public asset, these fifty-year-old trees, are the source of the damage and water being overutilized?
Yeah, so we do have in here the the noncompliant use that accounts for a leak, so that customer would not be subject to an incident or or fine because of that, so that flexibility is built in here to account for those. In terms of the tree, I think that's a separate conversation, you know, our funding sources do not account for the maintenance or removal of trees or damage caused by by trees, and so I know we do have some competing funding sources, but as an enterprise operation, you know, those trees, I think by municipal code, are the responsibility for maintenance by the property owner, I think that's a bigger conversation about how that gets addressed for the long term.
But in this case, it's a city tree, and the city right of way, creating the damage for the residential user resulting in a waste of water. Right now, there is no way for our city to find removal of those trees, except unless we pony up the money from our infrastructure dollars. Scott, can you answer that? What I'm trying to get ahead of is, when we start applying these fines and people start directing that the source of the problem is a city tree, who's going to have to come up with the resources to rectify the root cause?
Good morning, Council, Scott Mojer, Public Works Department. Let me first say we'd be glad to provide a tray memo or additional information about that. Just really quickly, there are two, two provisions at work here. One is the state law Streets and Highways Code that specifies that that any improvements along a property owner frontage is the property owner's responsible responsibility, similar to street trees, they are not owned by the city, they're in the city right of way, they're really regulated by the city, but they're not owned by the city. Second provision.
So Scott, what that, can you help me out there? The city planted the trees, it's a city right of way, they're not owned and we're not responsible for the trees?
No, the, what the municipal code says is, and this is where Fresno, as a charter city, stepped in and added to the state law and said that if the street tree causes damage to the curb gutter and sidewalk, the city, the taxpayers are responsible to repair that, but if the tree damages private improvements, say the sewer line, the water line connection, that's not owned by the city, that's the private property owners, then they are responsible for that. When risk claims come in, they are, they are denied for that purpose. Similarly, if the street tree damages someone's driveway behind the sidewalk, that's also the property owner's responsibility. Last item I'd share is that this council did adopt a change in the code that allows voluntary removal of trees unless it's a protected heritage type tree, so there is is an opportunity to take to take that out.
It would be at the cost of the resident, right?
Could be at the, either the residence cost or the code provision, thank, again, thank Doug's office for their help and work on this, that does allow the use of council infrastructure funds if desired to assist with that removal.
And I think in the case I'm speaking of, the owner has been given the opportunity to remove the tree at her cost, which is about five hundred dollars for somebody on a fixed income and who's nearly a hundred years old, so she's now has a six hundred dollar water bill, a five hundred dollar tree removal bill for a tree that is in the city right of way that the city planted, and now she's under threat of additional fines from the water department because of her inability to pay and to fix the water leakage. What I'm trying to illustrate with this example, which is real, and it happens every day, is as folks start to be fined, we're going to be asked to resolve how our trees, our broken infrastructure, is causing them to end up with a fine. So I just want to be very thoughtful of that, I know case by case we have to deal with it, but our fifty thousand dollars in infrastructure budget doesn't go anywhere near resolving all the damaged infrastructure we have in the city. And my last question, do you feel that this proposal and how you're proposing to implement it would resolve some of the concerns that were initially brought forward?
Yeah, I think the the issues before were, you know, a sudden transition from visual to automated. Obviously, the metering system is much more efficient at determining whether there's an exceedance of of the usage threshold or watering during the wrong time, and, you know, I think we used the speeding ticket analogy before, where everybody speeds sometimes, we don't go out in every single street and write tickets, the moment somebody goes fifty-six instead of fifty-five, and it's about focusing on those worst offenders, you know, achieving safety goals, you know, in that regard, for us, it would be conservation goals, and so that's kind of the basis of the program, and it's set up to incrementally achieve those goals by focusing on the worst offenders, but making sure that our staffing levels and services can support that.
Thank you, Mr. Carbohan, I just want to point out that I think the lesson for me in this first experience with the previous council was, we can't simply adopt a computer model, lease system, put it on autopilot, and expect that it's going to meet the needs of a diverse city that goes from a hundred and fifty years old to five years old. It's the same and similar conversation we're having around public infrastructure, simply following a computer model that determines the age and the cheapest treatment to a street, doesn't consider all the variables. So with that, I'm supportive of my council colleagues who want to take this slow, you know, pursue the modeling, come back, give us an idea of how big the problem is and the impact would be, who are the worst offenders, and then, you know, deal with the worst first before we start, you know, finding everybody across the board. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'm the only one left, so Mayor Brandon, I, when he was a council member, we sponsored the Water Conservation Act quite a while ago, and so I want to, as usual, practice what I preach. So what does that mean? This morning and every morning, my five gallon bucket is under the showerhead catching the water before it warms up, which is about three gallons per each member of my household, and we use that out in the flower garden and the flower beds. So I consider myself a Gold Star user, and that means I, if you look on your bill, it'll tell you the average use in the, in our community, and it'll tell your personal use, so I've made that part of our billing system so people can be aware, because HCFs don't mean a lot to people, but gallons do. So I think I've saved about since November, almost four thousand gallons a month below the average for that area. The downside of the equation is, I got a warning, one day I went over, I can't remember, thirty, thirty-five gallons, and so my point is that if I'm such a, an advocate for conservation and I conserve, shouldn't that be set off? If I'm over one day a hundred gallons, if you set that off against my four thousand gallon savings for that month, there should be a way to, an equitable way of handling that rather than giving me the warning. It was discouraging for my family, the first reaction was turn on all the sprinklers, which we didn't do because we, we tried so hard to comply with this, so is there some way that this current resolution addresses something like that?
Yeah, I think this this recommendation does. It allows for that one day per month of noncompliant use, so providing that flexibility to customers, especially a Gold Star customer who is by by all accounts achieving conservation, but for some reason had to utilize water, came back from vacation, whatever the the situation is, and and so whether it's a leak, an error, you know, that sort of thing, that's accounted for, and then on top of that, the the implementation is set up to focus on those worst offenders, those who have numerous incidents of excessive use in a month as opposed to somebody who had one.
I have, must confess that in July, when I'm out of the state in Montana, the, my family slips a little bit, so hopefully we can make that adjustment before I get home and reprimand them for impacting my Gold Star status, so thank you for that information.
Thank you.
The screen is clear?
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve by Member Brennerfield, seconded by Member Sparza, is there any opposition?
I do have a question, are we going to include the provisions about not immediately imposing the fines?
It's.
Is that part of the motion? Okay.
So is there an amendment to this resolution that we should put on the record, or are we? Okay, let's, can we state that on the motion basis, please?
Staff agree to do that, anyone, I don't know if we need to do a motion, I think, Mike, you committed to doing that.
Yeah, we will.
Do we need to make that part of the motion, legal counsel?
By council consensus, it can be considered part of the motion.
Very good, is there any opposition to the motion? Sign on, passes six zero, thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
So in my haste to be timely, we, I miscalculated a couple of things, so it's ten forty-seven, so I like to go in reverse order of the timed items so we can move through that part of our agenda, so the ten thirty-five timed item, number one is appearance by Sammy Franco to address the council, and then ten thirty-five, number two, is appearance by Rachel Franco to address the council. So, Mr. Franco, if you're here, please come forward and identify yourself, your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Sammy Franco, ten thirty-nine East Hogan Avenue, Fresno, California, nine three seven three zero. First of all, thank you for allowing me to be here again today, I spoke in front of the council, or most of you guys, with the exception of a couple, last September of two thousand and eighteen, to voice my concerns about the lease and service agreement for Granite Park and the breaches that I saw in the contract, and I was thankful to get some clarification on a few things, and was given some answers that day that it was being looked into a little deeper as far as the financial audit was was happening. Since then, the audit has been completed, it was completed in November of two thousand and eighteen and was not released to anyone until the PRA was done, well, as far as my knowledge goes, I'm not sure if it was passed along to anyone, or if you guys saw it before And in that audit was seven findings that were detrimental to the outcome of the Internal Audit Division to make the decision on whether or not to grant them additional funding, and we don't have time to cover the audit piece by piece, but anyone who's looked at it has seen what's in it and can devise their their own answers from that. My question today is, what accountability do we hand out to our partners, the city's partners, who basically have not lived up to what they're supposed to? And I do know and I understand what an asset that Granite Park can be to the city and what it is now, what it can become, and what it means to have a management team in place there, I one hundred percent understand that, but I think the greater issue at hand is the public deserves an answer to this audit and its findings, you know, whether or not the scope of the audit is agreed upon or not, I think that the findings speak for themselves in certain areas, and more so, Mr. Capriolino, my parents are constituents in your district, and I grew up in your district, and they've asked me, you know, because I, I'm not the only one who's asking these questions, people call me daily, and I don't have answers, and so that's when I seek information, and I end up here or doing PRAs or something like that. So my my question is that in September, you felt very confident and you were happy with the management team in place at the time, and the work that they were doing, which the park does look great, and I think that a few of the covenants in their agreement have, you know, they're there, the three baseball fields, the parks being used, I don't think that there's been any after-school programs, or, you know, the main goal of that was to pull kids in off the street, wrap services around children, after-school programs, homework help, I don't, I don't know if any of that has been accomplished there, but after the results of the audit and seeing how it has been managed by that management team, my question, and I think a lot of other people's questions, is do you guys feel the same way?
Thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate that. Next up is Rachel Franco, you'll have three minutes.
I apologize, my wife wasn't able to be cleared for employment duties today, so she can't be here, so she won't be speaking.
Sorry, thank you for that. That concludes our ten oh five item, Member Arias?
Counsel, legal counsel, can you provide us a quick update on the status of the organization, the agreement with the city?
Yes, our legal opinion is that the nonprofit is in substantial compliance with its contract obligations.
Thank you very much. Next is a ten thirty item, it's a hearing to consider a plan amendment slash rezone in application number P one eight dash zero zero one one six, and this is from Darn, welcome.
Thank you, good morning, Ralph Caccadorian with the Development and Resource Management. The proposal you have is a general plan amendment and a rezone, basically a land swap of some small parcel portions, you have before you the environmental document to consider and adopt, as well as the resolution for the amendment and the rezone or the bill for the rezone application. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you want to see a presentation, I have that, the applicant is here as well if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, is there anyone from the public that wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Please come forward, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Mr. President, Bill Robinson, nine oh six N Street, Suite one hundred downtown Fresno, here representing Darrell's Mini Storage, the applicant, and the two property owners, which is the Wesclo and the Miyaki family, and as Planner Caccadorian said, this is essentially is a land swap, this project was approved in two thousand and four, and the market at that time wasn't strong, the recession came along, it got further delayed, and then an opportunity became about, not too long ago, to square up some boundaries, and so there's a small parcel, about an acre, swapping for about an acre and a half, and everything's pretty much explained by the exhibits in your in your packet, so I'll be glad to answer any questions, but I'll forego any more information on it.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, we'll call you if there's any questions. We'll call you if there's any questions. Anyone else in the public like to talk about this? Please come up. Okay, seeing none. This is in District 5. Member Chavez.
Bill, thank you for meeting with me, giving me overview of the project, and, you know, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Member by motion, motion by Member Chavez, seconded by Member Soria. Is there any opposition to the motion? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't. Madam Clerk, Member Arias punches up, and it doesn't come on my screen. I don't know if there's some way to accommodate that.
I think Council President is discriminating against me, but I won't take it personal.
Yeah, you are. You'll be next.
Can you explain to me what's going to take place on the actual property? I like to hear layman's terms, not just for my benefit, for the general public who's watching us on TV.
Sure. Unfortunately, there's not a, there wasn't a presentation, but in your packet, there's two maps, one for a plan amendment and one for a rezone. The Miyaki family owned a small rural residential parcel in the northwest corner of the proposed project, and the Darrell's Mini Storage property that was approved for the project in 2004 actually went up to a street in a subdivision. And what's being traded is the, there's an acquisition of the Masaki property, and that'll be incorporated into the Darrell's Mini Storage project. And the northern strip of land on the Darrell's project is being incorporated into the northern subdivision, so therefore, that'll be divided into single-family lots and make that more cohesive in that neighborhood, so that the Darrell's doesn't come to the street. Here we go. If you look at the top, you'll see a strip of .91 acres that currently is part of the Darrell's Mini Storage property. And if you look on the left-hand side, you'll see a small residential parcel, that's the Masaki residence. That's being acquired, incorporated into the Darrell's Mini Storage project, and Darrell's is detaching the .91 acres at the top, and that'll be incorporated into that subdivision. This doesn't, this is an older aerial. That dirt area up there is actually all houses now. And so I think you can see the front of them. So what'll happen is, that street will be a complete street with residents on both sides. And so essentially, it's, as Ralph said, it's a land swap. There's a, to complete the description, there is a rezone of the current parcels owned by Darrell's Mini Storage, and that is to remove a requirement for a public street, which was originally going to be on the south side of the project called Cavilland. That street isn't longer necessary, so we need to remove the CZ, which is a conditional zoning, by a rezone. So the two Darrell's parcels are being rezoned, Masaki property is being changed for land use and rezone, and the portion up there that's cross-hatched on the left exhibit is being incorporated into the subdivision, therefore, it had to be rezoned to a medium-density residential.
So it's a series of swapping of lines and uses?
Yeah, and it's squaring off the boundaries. And really, what it's doing is, as I said, that subdivision to the north would have the back of a Darrell's Mini Storage along a street. And by pulling the property line south, that'll enable that to be divided into single-family residential homes and make it more of a complete neighborhood.
So is a plan to build a Darrell's Mini Storage in that area?
Yes, yes. It was, like I said, was approved in 2004. We're going to go forward with that right away. Plans have already been designed, and so as soon as we get the supplemental to the rezone and general plan amendments as a development permit, that's already been submitted, and we're waiting on conditions of approval, which will be coming to us any day. Once those are received, the project plan will be submitted, and then construction drawings will follow that.
My last comment on this item is, you know, I've been through several Darrell's Mini storages. Those up north tend to look really nice on the outside landscaping, and, you know, they tend to be a great addition to neighborhood architecture and to the visual, the visualness of a neighborhood, but I haven't seen that consistently done across the city. So I would just ask Darrell's Mini Storage to make sure that whatever you build in southeast is comparable to what's in northeast Fresno, in terms of the quality of exterior, to make sure that everybody gets the same quality of projects in their neighborhoods.
I assure you that is the case. Ralph, do you have the site plan?
Does it include like a water fountain feature that I've seen in other places?
I'll show you the site plan if you've got it. You don't have it?
You don't have to do it today. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're consistent in the quality of projects that are built across the city. I know I have some in my district, and they're probably older nature. They just don't look as nice with waterfall features as others have.
I can assure you that's the case, because we've already submitted the plan. There will be a water feature. The entrance is actually at the southeast corner of the project, and the full frontage on Clovis will be completed with trees prescribed by the Parks Department, and there'll be at least a 20-foot landscape easement along there. So, thank you.
Member Esparza?
Yeah, so in a few minutes, at the end of this hearing, we're going to hear about our progress on the city's housing element. And so that's really kind of the lens that I've kind of viewed this project with and reading the, reading the packet here. So if I'm reading this correctly, and if I'm understanding correctly, the way you described councilmember Arias is kind of a swapping. We are moving some rezoning for trading off the .39 acre portion from housing to employment business, and then the other .91 acres going in the reverse direction. Is that, is that accurate?
That is correct. A rural residential with one house on it is being incorporated into this project, and actually, single-family additional, about seven or eight lots will probably be created in the subdivision adjacent. So it's a net gain in housing, actually.
So, yeah, so, so I, and these roll primarily for single-family, right?
Yes. The subdivision to the north, it's already single-family. The rezone will be to a single-family.
Okay. Well, my concern was, I mean, you know, I didn't, I wasn't familiar with exactly what type of housing it was zoned for, and for multifamily, you want it to be of a certain size, right?
Yeah, well, the code, the development code has minimum lot sizes for densities, so.
Yeah.
Yes. That land was, is actually being acquired. That strip along the north side there is being acquired by the developer of the adjacent subdivision, so it's a really good deal for both sides. By the way, this is the current Darrell's Mini Storage parcels are zone BP, which is Business Park, and it's a by right use.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Brettafield?
Yes, Bill. I'm concerned in terms of what Councilman Arias said, that Darrell's Mini storages are built differently in the south, as opposed to the north. Is that accurate? Because if that's the case, I'm really concerned about it.
There are 77 sites that Darrell's Mini Storage owns, or some, most of them are operated. They're in many communities in the valley. Some of them were built 30, 40 years ago. Actually, Darrell's is in the third generation. There was the grandfather, the father, and the son, and the son just recently retired. So, yes, they are in varying degrees of design. We currently have another project we're trying to expand on Belmont Avenue, and in, I think it's District 1, is Belmont, on Belmont. We have a, this actually is interesting to you, we have a application in currently to expand that, and the frontage on that's going to be enhanced, because right now, it's pretty plain. But it was in the county and next to the city, so there's conditions like that where the sites are older, and obviously, the newer ones may have more appeal, curb appeal.
So does Darrell's Mini Storage have different standards for when they're building in the south versus the north? Or do they have different standards for building in council? I mean, you might be concerned about this, Councilmember Chavez, because the one's coming in yours, and there may be different standards that we're not aware of. I'm not aware of it. I think he builds quality stuff throughout the city. Some of it may be older, but I mean, when we raise the specter that somebody has not built something of quality because it was in the south versus the north, that's troubling to me.
I understand, and again, I think it's just a matter of age of the various projects. We have to go through a process, either a CUP, or in this case, a development permit, which is because BP's a right, but we still have to go through a development permit. That's reviewed by staff, and I'm sure that they will listen to your, to your concerns and that we will be doing quality projects.
That's good to hear.
I'm working on seven. Every one of them is first class.
Yeah, no different standards for different parts of the city?
No, sir. And staff, because, because staff oversees the entire city and enforces the development code, they can ensure that the, that every new site is quality. And we are going back, as I said, on Belmont, and that site, that frontage will be rehabbed. It doesn't have any landscaping now, and it will, because we're going to be required for it. I'll bring that to you. I think that'd be a good opportunity.
Excellent. I've always believed he was building quality stuff and didn't have different standards for anybody. I'm glad you reaffirmed that. Thank you.
Thank you also for confirming that there's, they're in different conditions and that you're looking to upgrade the ones that are 30 and 40 years old that are not, don't have water features and great landscaping.
I don't, can't guarantee a water feature, because it has to have a certain setback, and it's very, the belt, because it's an old county area, the setback there is very minimal. In fact, we, there's a trail prescribed for that area, and we're not sure if it'll fit. Public Works is going to tell us what to do there. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, moving right along. Member Chavez?
Before we start having conversations about what these designs, I want to remind my colleagues, this is in District 5. Bill, thank you for meeting with me. Now, if you do a project in District 6 and 3, you might want to consider some waterfall statues with Councilmember Brettafield's base on it, or maybe Councilmember Arias' base on it. I think that would work in the future. So with that, I'll call for the question.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none, passes 6-0. Next, we're going to go to the 1005 item on 2018 Housing Element Progress Report. Before we start that, I wanted to announce that for that item, we have a Spanish and Mong interpreter available for anyone who needs any assistance in this particular item, and this will be presented by Darn. I want to thank you guys for your patience. I apparently juxtaposed some numbers and got off track with the timed items, so we're going to, we're going to get back on track. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Council President Capriolio, members of the council. I'm Sophia Pagalatas with the Development and Resource Management Department, and this morning, we're pleased to present our Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2018. And Brianna, could you assist me with the PowerPoint there?
She should be able to.
Okay. Pardon. I apologize. We are right in the middle of the presentation.
Let me take you back to the beginning, just for this page. Is that the beginning?
Yep. Just right from the beginning. There we go.
Do you know that one?
Yep. Right there. Oh, we need to go back up. Sorry. Okay. There we go. And one more. There we go. And this morning's presentation will include information about the purpose of the housing element and the annual progress report, of course, our progress on implementing the housing element, which will include housing production, the site's inventory, and our housing programs, and then we'll wrap up with outreach and public comment. So the housing element is one of seven mandated elements of the general plan. It is the only element that is, that requires certification by a state agency. In this case, that's the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Housing elements are also unique in that they have an eight-year cycle, and our current housing element cycle began in 2015 and ends in 2023. So the Housing Element Annual Report is also required by state law. It's due in April of every year, and I will say that this year, after the housing package of recent legislation, our reporting requirement has become much more complex and detailed. So we're reporting on a lot more information. So we will jump right into describing our housing production, our site's inventory status, and our program implementation progress from 2018. So what was our housing production in 2018? Well, this year, instead of just reporting on building permits, as we have in past years, we are now reporting on every stage of the entitlement process. So you can see that we reported on planning applications submitted, planning entitlements completed, building permits issued, and actual constructed units. And just to summarize this for you, in the last year, a total of 1,073 housing units were constructed, of which 880 were single-family, 190 were multifamily, and of those, 55 were covenanted affordable units. So to make this a little bit more meaningful for you, although the state didn't require it, we wanted to map this information. So at each stage in the entitlement process, you can see, here's the locations where our housing applications were submitted. The yellow dots are single-family, the blue dots are multifamily, and if it has a little pink ring around it, it means it's covenanted affordable. So this is application submitted. These are actual housing entitlements granted over 2018. These are building permits granted in 2018. And finally, these are the housing units that were constructed in 2018. It's important to note that these are not mutually exclusive categories, so one dwelling unit might appear in three or more of the categories, but this is how we were to report it. The next piece of our Housing Element Annual Report is the housing sites inventory, which is land that every city has to have for housing. Every jurisdiction must maintain an adequate supply of vacant land to encourage a healthy housing market. And the way this is defined in Housing Element language is through what we call ARENA, a regional housing needs allocation. And this is a planning goal that every jurisdiction needs to accommodate in its land supply to meet projected housing demand. So in Fresno, for this housing element, our ARENA was 23,565 units of supply capacity. Also, the state divides this up by affordability levels, and I'll explain what that means in a moment. And on top of that, the city has what we call an additional ARENA from a prior housing element cycle, to the tune of about 4,800 units of capacity. So when we talk about affordability levels, how do we define that when we're talking about vacant land? The state translates affordability into density. So land that would be suitable for very low and low-income housing must be zoned at 30 units to the acre or more. Land that would be suitable for moderate-income housing is defined as 16 to 30 units per acre, and land suitable for above moderate income is zoned at below 16 units to the acre. Here is the City of Fresno sites inventory map as it looked when the housing element was adopted. You can see the land, the zoning. And it's important to note that when the housing element was adopted in 2016 and then amended in 2017, the city did not have to rezone land to accommodate its ARENA. The general plan had recently been adopted, and that land use design basically provided adequate capacity for the site's inventory. So where are we with our ARENA today? Well, if you look on the left-hand red column, you'll see the grand total there of our, of our primary sites inventory, 23,565 units of land capacity. The blue columns show the units that have actually been constructed in the intervening years, and then over to the right, the red column shows what is left and what is our required land capacity today. And it totals 16,000 or so units worth of land capacity. Now, the city, we know that rezones and plan amendments occur, and so the city also has surpluses in all of these categories, approximately 10,000 units worth of surplus. So coming into the third portion of our report are the city's housing programs, and our housing element contains 28 different housing programs grouped together in five basic objective areas. So I'm going to describe each one of those in terms of the objectives. So the first objective is adequate sites to accommodate a range of housing, and I've just discussed that. The city, the annual progress report does affirm that the city has adequate sites. Now, it's important to note that in our rollover ARENA, which is focused in the downtown, we are near our supply limit, and so you will see us coming us coming back this year and designating additional Housing Element sites in the downtown. Important to note, we won't need to rezone to do this because the zoning is already perfectly appropriate in the downtown, but we will be designating additional sites in the downtown. The next objective is assisting in the development of housing to meet the needs of low-income households, and we have a myriad of programs that address this, many of them that involve partnering with affordable housing developers. Our first couple of report-outs that we'd like to emphasize are housing that's in the pipeline this year. Self-Help Enterprises' Anadale Commons is building forty units of affordable senior housing, and that's CHODO-funded. And on the right, you see the Groundbreaking for Habitat for Humanities project on North Barkis, which is west of ninety-nine. Also, the Fresno Housing Authority completed two affordable housing projects in the last year. Renaissance at Park Grove includes forty apartments for homeless and disabled veterans, and this is also Fresno Housing Authority's Phase One of its Legacy Commons Project to the west of Edison includes sixty-four mixed-income apartments. The third objective relates to removal of government constraints to housing, and so this is looking at our regulatory framework and how can we best incentivize housing. One of our highlights to report is the creation of the Downtown Displacement Program. As you know, the Anti-Displacement Task Force was created in November of two thousand and eighteen. The members were ratified in January of two thousand and nineteen, and the first meeting will occur this spring. And the Money Back Guarantee Streamlining Act was also approved early this year by the council. The next objective area is conserving Fresno's existing housing stock, and in that portfolio of programs, we include a lot of neighborhood revitalization activities. Highlights include the Rental Housing Registry having over eighty thousand rental units, and also infrastructure, because in order to conserve existing housing units, we need to invest in the infrastructure in in the older neighborhoods. So thirty-nine infrastructure improvement projects were completed in two thousand and eighteen, as well as thirty grants awarded for programs that provide paint and minor repair to seniors, distressed property grants, and home rehabilitation funds for lower-income households. Finally, the last objective is related to equal-opportunity housing. We have three programs there, and we'd like to highlight our community development block grant, infrastructure funding in low-moderate-income areas that funded neighborhood street improvements, parks, public facilities, and nonprofit facility improvements. And again, we were not required to by the state, but we thought it was important to map infrastructure. So this map shows, and you have it in your packet, you can probably see it better there, shows the city's infrastructure, both funded by CDBG and the capital improvement projects. And what outreach did we do for this meeting? Well, we noticed in the Fresno B in March. We also provided Spanish notices in Vida en el Valle in in March and April. We mailed bilingual flyers to our stakeholder list of over five hundred people and organizations. We posted this hearing on social media. We got the word out on Mong radio, and we provided hard copies at all Fresno libraries. What public comment did we receive? We did, at the time that we sent you your packets, we had received one letter from Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, so you had that in your packet. Subsequently, we received a letter from the California Apartment Association and a letter from Central California Legal Services. And in general, the letters asked for clarifications and and were actually quite helpful in in our clarifying items in our report to the state. There were also comments and wanting to point out commitments that the city has made that are coming up. There were some questions about mobile homes and conserving mobile homes as affordable housing, so we are working with the State Department of Housing and Community Development on that. And in your supplement that you received-
Sophia-
Yes.
When you say that you're working on that, what does that mean?
It means that we've we're in conversations with our representative at the State Department of Housing and Community Development to see what state resources they can bring to bear to actually come and be onsite in Fresno, meet with mobile home park residents, and help connect them to resources. So so with that, you do have a response to comments in your packet that came as a supplement yesterday, and that brings us to the staff recommendation, which is to hold a public hearing and to accept the two thousand and eighteen Annual Progress Report.
Thank you for that presentation. Before we go into public comment and the DIA's comments, I wanted to go back one more time to three A. It's to approve the award of a purchase contract to Swanson Farni for Ford vehicles. Can we do that real quick? And then we'll come back to this item and complete it, hopefully before lunch.
Good morning, Council President. Greg Barfield, Department of Transportation here, representing the Municipal Fleet Division. We're here to ask for your support in purchasing forty-one vehicles for the department's public utilities, public works, and airports. The information is included in our staff report. I don't have any additional comments unless you have questions.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate that presentation. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I think Member Chavez punched up. My screen doesn't reflect that. So had a motion by Member Chavez, second by Member Brettafield. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the motion?
Questions.
Oh, I don't know why it's not punching up on my screen, but-
She looked over at him.
Member Arias.
Greg, just one general question. I don't know if it's specific to to your department or all the other departments, but are we buying fuel-efficient vehicles as we or anything of that nature, hybrid vehicles, as we're replacing this huge amount of fleets? Or are these basic unleaded gas trucks?
These are basic unleaded gas trucks in this in this procurement. But we do look for, particularly in buses, we are one hundred percent CNG with one hybrid, and of course, we've now purchased our first electric buses.
So so just feedback from my part, I'd like to us going forward-
Sure.
-to buy, you know, fuel-efficient vehicles-
Okay.
-and make that a standard purchase versus just buying the old gas clusters-
Understood.
-when it's appropriate and, you know, makes sense for the actual use.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Shad, you're up.
Wanted to comment on that. We do, as our process, look for those opportunities to buy fuel-efficient vehicles. It really depends upon the application. As Greg mentioned, we look at electric, we're looking at electric buses, which are now replacing CNG-fueled vehicles that are very clean. We do look at hybrids when it makes sense to to utilize them, and we've also bought significant numbers of light CNG vehicles. I think some of the problem you run into is whether the the vehicle fits the application, as well as when we start talking about these types of vehicles, they they do come at a premium, so we have to look at the cost of the vehicle and whether we can afford that vehicle. But there are rebates and we out there, particularly with the Air District and CARB, and we try and take advantage of those whenever we can.
I absolutely recognize the additional price. I mean, I own a hybrid. We all pay a higher fee upfront, but at the end of the day, you know, with the level of pollution that we have in Fresno, with the size of fleet and the means that we have, I think it's a good investment to pay a premium upfront, so we can actually burn less fuel and create less pollution in the backend.
And as I said, that is what we try and do. I would encourage you to step up to a full-electric vehicle.
Thank you. Member Soria.
So just one quick question. Greg, I noticed that as part of the funding streams, we are using SB one gas tax dollars. Are those the ones that we got from last, this past fiscal year, or are these for the new fiscal year? Just wondering where this source of funding?
These are the ones budgeted in this fiscal year for this particular purpose by the Department of, I believe it's Public Works, as gas tax.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this was for this fiscal-
Prop one eleven.
Okay, perfect.
Prop one eleven.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The screen is clear. We have a motion by Member Chavez, second by Member Brettafield. Is there any opposition? There is none. Pass is six zero. Now we can return to the Housing-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member, Mr. Thank you, Member Brettafield. Barfield, Brettafield, I'm in the Bs. First day jitters, I don't know. So I think we're open to public comment now on the housing presentation. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to come forward and speak on the item? Please do so, and start with your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Good morning, sir. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Lucio Avila with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Address is seven six four P Street, Suite one oh two, I mean, sorry, Suite twelve, and just came today to just give my comments. California's in the middle of a housing crisis. Rents are really, they're rising really fast here in Fresno, so it's really important to implement the the Housing Element. I'm sure you're all aware that affordable housing contributes to the well-being of both parents and children, and and even maybe some of you guys have experienced that growing up. Poverty in Fresno limits the housing choices. Low-income residents have to spend like half of their income on on rent, so we really need to increase the supply of extremely low, very low, and low-income housing for both single and multifamily units. Rents, like I said, rents are rising fast, so it's really important to implement programs that like rental assistance and also for first-time homebuyers. There's a there's been an increase in homelessness, so programs with low barriers for unsheltered homeless should be a priority as well, too. And and while all the programs mentioned in the Housing Element are important, these are a few programs that residents I work with throughout South Fresno mentioned to me. Program eight was supposed to assist at least ten first-time homebuyers, but the city didn't offer the the program this year, even though whether it's the lack of outreach or or I'm not sure, but I am, I'm sure there's folks out there that could benefit from assistance. Program ten, we just want to make sure the assessment is done in collaboration with with the mobile home residents, some meaningful outreach to them, you know, going knocking on the doors and seeing what their needs are. Program twenty, which was in response to to the Somerset Village apartment crisis, which is supposed to inspect housing units for for to make them healthy and livable. It said that was supposed to review eight thousand units, and they only reviewed one thousand, five hundred units, so that's a little bit of a concern for us just because how important this was for residents that we work with. Program twenty-two, housing rehabilitation, just folks that I work with didn't weren't even aware of these programs, so I think just having better outreach and better outreach so folks can are aware of these programs. And also, and like they mentioned, we send a letter outlining our concerns, and it appears that some of these programs are not being implemented, and 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 these programs are required by the Housing Element. And all of this is in hopes that we have that we advance housing access to 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 everybody in Fresno, but particularly the most burdened neighborhoods. And and the last thing, I really want to thank the the departments for meeting with us. Really appreciate it, and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a card here for Keel Lopez Schmidt. Please come forward, and if you would give us your name and address. Hope I pronounced that correctly.
That's all right. Kyle Lopez Schmidt, thirty thirty-five North Ferris Avenue, Fresno, California. I'm here representing the Northern California Community Loan Fund. I'm their Central Valley Regional Manager, and we are a community development financial institution that does lending and consulting on affordable housing. This is a very important element of our city in growing a healthy stock of affordable housing. I would encourage the administration and the council to look to our financial institutions as important partners on how we build the housing that's needed in the community that we're here as a resource for you. We are working on a collaborative with the Community Foundation and other CDFIs to increase the readiness and kind of development readiness of several community development corporations in our community, Better Blackstone, the Southwest CDC, Lowell CDC, Chinatown Foundation, as well as the Downtown Fresno Partnership, in order to get them to have five projects in five different neighborhoods that are development-ready within five years, or three years, sorry. So that's a an element that we're contributing to this. One kind of point around outreach and communication with the community, the staff has been really on point and providing all the documentation needing. There was a little frustration with the Housing Community Development Commission. They had two meetings that were canceled or postponed because of a lack of quorum, so hopefully we can get community members in those positions that are ready and willing and able to contribute to those commissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next card is from Kimberly McCoy. You'll please come up and address the council, starting with your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you for being here today.
Not that tall. Kimberly McCoy, my address is thirty-one thirty-eight West Santa Ana Avenue, Fresno, California, nine three seven two two. Councilmember, District Soria's district, and I want to provide comments on the Housing Element. As a project director for Fresno Building Healthy Communities, who has engaged with thousands of residents who voiced their concern about the housing conditions, and some of their concerns is wanting to be able to purchase homes, not being stacked on top of each other because of them being low-income, it's very important for the Housing Element to be implemented. Fresno rent is currently rising fast, and low-income residents spend more than fifty percent of their monthly income on rent. But let's not forget that this isn't a new policy. The Housing Element, General Plan, and the Act of Transportation Plan all have policies essentially targeting dollars in infrastructure projects in established neighborhoods and schools. This isn't a new policy. They exist today in plans and have been approved by council. I ask the council to have a real community engagement process when it comes to implementing the Housing Element, so they can really hear and understand the concerns of the residents. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the cards we have. Is there anyone else from the community that wishes to come forward? This is your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Member Soria, you're up.
Thank you. So I have mostly comments. I know that I've had an opportunity and my staff had an opportunity to sit down with with Sophia. We also met with community advocates, and we went through the information that was provided. I do want to just, you know, appreciate the advocacy that is being done by the community to keep us accountable and make sure that we're addressing their points. And so I know that the staff went back to answer and clarify a number of the questions that they answered, and so I'm grateful that that happened. I know we had a conversation about it. You know, I think the comments made by Lucio early on when he talks about we're facing a housing crisis, and I think the housing crisis across the state, I would say we're feeling it probably, probably a little bit more here in the City of Fresno because of the average household income is much lower, and and residents are much burdened, are burdened much higher with housing costs. You know, seventy percent, I think, of people's income is going towards housing costs. So that's a problem here in the City of Fresno. I will say that I'm actually working with a couple of my colleagues to bring forward a resolution to address, I think, part of the issues that we're facing. One, I think that we struggle with affordable housing developments and and bringing those forwards. I know that you highlighted some great ones, but even just like the Lingo development that is going to be coming online in a couple years on McKinley and Blackstone. I've been working on that since two thousand and fif- end of fifteen, and we're in two thousand and nine, and these eighty-eight units mixed-use development, which are going to be affordable, won't be online until two more years. So that tells us it takes a long time to bring these types of projects onboard. Again, because there's lack of local city matching dollars that a lot of these developers that are developing affordable housing need in order to be competitive for the state dollars that are available. So this council really needs to have a honest conversation as to how are we going to leverage our local existing dollars to be able to leverage the state bond housing dollars and even other affordable housing dollars that exist through AHSC and so forth. So I look forward to having that conversation and bringing a proposal forward in the coming weeks. I'm also very interested in the conversation about not just building new housing, but rehabbing existing homes, not only existing homes that are owned, but also rehabbing- existing homes, um, not only existing homes that are owned, but also rehabbing, um, existing multifamily housing developments that need, you know, um, some additional upkeep, especially in the older neighborhoods, you know, I don't think it's about, um, tearing them down, it's about taking some time and investments and working in creating programs and getting creative to be able to rehab existing, um, multifamily housing. Also, one of the other things that I'm interested in, which I, I believe the city of Fresno hasn't done at least since my time here, is first-time homeownership opportunities. I know that, um, my family, who was an immigrant family, um, had the opportunity to buy their first home probably ten years after they got in, um, they came into this country, and that forever changed our lives because it provided us stability, it provided us our ability to build equity. Um, may, we may not have been, um, rich growing up, but at least we knew we had a stable home, um, when we've, when we were able to purchase that first home. It wasn't the, the best of quality and what at the time existed in the city of Lindsay where, where I, um, grew up, um, they had a rehab program where the low-income, um, to low moderate income families could apply if you owned your home and you could rehab it or they would demolish it, um, you know, totally if it wasn't worth the cost of just rehabbing it. And so we got a brand-new house, um, after a few years because there was this program that allowed my parents to apply for this kind of grant, sort of a loan grant type of deal. Um, so it's those types of programs that we have to again reinvest in our community if we're serious about, um, addressing the housing issues that, that are plaguing our, our community. The other thing that I want to note is, um, when we're talking about affordable housing and multifamily housing, I believe that we need to have a, and be much more intentional about where we're placing these affordable housing developments, um, and that includes, um, what are called high-opportunity areas. Everyone should have the ability to, to live in a neighborhood that has, you know, the best, um, quality of life, all the resources, um, the amenities, the infrastructure, and so, um, I'm interested in seeing what this council wants to do, um, as we move forward in really implementing a housing, um, element and a plan that will really bridge that gap that has existed for too many decades. The other thing that I want to point out and note, and we've had this discussion with the mayor and the administration in the last couple weeks when it comes to infrastructure, um, infrastructure, um, investments, um, in particular when it comes to even SB one dollars. Um, if we look at the general plan and the housing plan and the Act, Active Transportation Plan, we, this body has supported policies that says we're gonna prioritize old neighborhoods. So this housing plan, again, as part of its program, I think Program Twenty-seven, talking about equitable communities, outlines that where, uh, funding sources allow and SB one dollars are those types of sources that are allowable to be utilized, um, and prioritize basic infrastructure like sidewalks, gutters, streetlights, um, in communities that for a long time have been left behind. So I just wanted to highlight that so that this body understands that every time we're, we're approving and the staff presents, uh, housing element plan, um, when we go back to our general plan, um, when we're updating it, these policies are encompassed in what we are voting and supporting time and time again. However, the implementation of them hasn't reflect that we're meeting the policies that we have committed, um, to put in these documents, and so I hope that as we move forward, it is, um, budget, um, the budget is reflective of the priorities that we've outlined both in the housing element, in the general plan, and I believe, um, really the comments that have been made prob- um, from the majority of this council saying that, hey, we need to really, um, execute what we've said we've, we are gonna do, and we've said this in the last two decades. And so I, I hope that when the opportunity comes in the next, um, couple weeks to bring back SB one, um, allocations and the budget when we're looking at other infrastructure dollars, we're serious about being able to implement, um, what we are outlining and what this body is receiving today. So I want to thank you guys for the work that you guys have done, we have a lot of work to do, um, in terms of the resources, and I think my time is up, I'm, I'm timed, but that was, that was, that was a good signal.
You will be going forward.
But, um, again, I do appreciate, um, the work that you guys have been doing, I know that with the limited resources we are challenged, but I'm confident that with, uh, this body and with the help of everyone, even, you know, the, um, folks like Kyle, we can move forward and have additional resources. Thank you.
Next is member Chavez, followed by member Arias, followed by member Sparza, and I want to remind everyone, this is not an action item today, thank you. Member Chavez.
Thank you, if you ring that bell, I'll speak five minutes longer. Um, first of all, I want to thank, uh, leadership, I want to thank Ashley, Lucio, uh, Gracia, especially for the Southeast, the specific plan, uh, that you guys sat on, that was actually very helpful and we're gonna be making some announcements here pretty shortly. Um, and then I also wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, mention that our, our office is gonna be supporting that on an ongoing basis, uh, for the following reasons, we actually have about six, uh, projects that are currently in the pipeline, uh, as a result of that conversation, and I think you guys are familiar with one of the developers that came and listened to the conversation that the residents had, and so he's gonna be making an announcement on a specific project, uh, but these projects that I'm referencing, um, are all, uh, affordable housing, and, and I asked them to come and present them to the committee, and so I'd like to extend that, that, uh, extension of the, the work that will be happening. Um, you know, and, and I think we should, we should call this what, what it is, um, because I see it as such, it is a housing crisis here in the city of Fresno. Um, I had a meeting about a couple weeks ago in the Saint Anthony, uh, Claret neighborhood, and, and about, I would say about forty percent of the people that were there mentioned the affordability of housing and, and rents going up here, uh, significantly, there was one, uh, single mother that told me that she spends about sixty-five percent of her income just on housing, uh, which we know what that means for other, um, types of disposable income needs such as, you know, food, putting food on the table, car payment, insurance, and so that's something that, that we need to address, and, and on, on that line, just like my colleagues mentioned, I think what I would like to see in our housing element plan, because we keep kind of trying to put a, a Band-Aid on it, I don't want us to just do the bare minimum, uh, to satisfy state law, I think we should go above and beyond, uh, what those standards are and make sure that we're very intentional and strategic about, uh, the affordability of housing in our area. And, and so, you know, going forward, um, we're gonna be having a couple of community meetings in, in my area, um, Lucio, I think Daniel's gonna be reaching out here pretty shortly on, on having those and establishing those, but I, I think that's what's gonna be, uh, key for us, the community input has to be there, uh, and we know that when we submit a lot of these proposals, whether it be Sacramento or DC, the, the community engagement piece is key in making those proposals a lot more marketable. Uh, and so with that, before the bell rings, um, I'll yield my, my time back.
Thank you very much, uh, member Arias.
Thank you, um, staff, can you come, I have a couple questions on the actual housing element, I do appreciate the fact that you guys spend time with us. In your assessment, are we meeting the state standard for affordable housing as a city?
Well, I'm on yes. Um, that is a, um, a difficult question to answer because we don't have specific affordable housing percentage-type goals in the housing element. We have requirements for the land that we make available for, um, different levels of housing, including affordable housing, which we are meeting those goals, but we don't have requirements for actual units.
Okay. I noticed that on the, uh, housing projects that you presented, uh, those projects, where are they located at?
So, the Anadale Commons is in southwest Fresno on Anadale, the Barkus Project, it's Habitat for Humanity, is just west of ninety-nine near Polk and Gettysburg, um, the, uh, Park, uh, Grove Commons Project for Veterans is near Clinton and Fresno Street, and then the Edison, uh, it's called Legacy Commons now, is, uh, just west of Edison on Plumas in southwest Fresno.
So is it fair to say that, um, the majority of affordable housing projects that we are highlighting and that the city has funded have been primarily located in the southern part of the city?
That, those, the Barkus location is up at Gettysburg, but the other locations are, are south of that, yes.
Got it, so essentially all of them are south of Shaw.
Yes.
Um, is there any, uh, goal for us to, I, I read a lot of language related to equitable housing opportunities, should be across the city, is there any specific goal that would have us seeking, uh, projects to be located across the whole city?
There, there are, one is just the sites inventory that has us, um, identify a variety of sites at different zoning levels all over the city, but also if you look at Housing Element Program Twenty-seven, it's, um, it is community equity, and that program, um, looks at investing infrastructure in older areas of the city and also encouraging the development of higher-density developments in the northern area, or it, it calls it, um, high-opportunity areas is the term that's being used.
In the high-opportunity areas, do they have the same need for significant infrastructure investment in order to build the housing?
I would say every project that comes in, every housing project has its own infrastructure burden, so the requirements would be the same.
Okay. I noticed that, um, on your Area Eight, you identified that we would be seeking, uh, funds for first-time homebuyer assistance, do we currently have a program of that nature?
For that, I would need to ask the Housing Division, I know it varies from year to year, is there someone who can assist with that?
Good morning, council, Jennifer Clark, Director Development Resource Management. So, in the past, the city had access to a state program which provided, um, down-payment assistance to first-time homebuyers, um, we do not currently have that program available, um, however, it is something that we could, um, look at implementing in the future or applying again to the state for those dollars, um, they were essentially, you know, approximately fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars that would be down-payment and closing-cost assistance.
Is staff proposing in their upcoming, um, budget to the council, any local dollars being allocated towards first-time home buyer assistance?
There are, right, so the Annual Action Plan, which was published, I think, uh, a week or so ago, does not, um, have a, a first-time homebuyer program recommended, but home is an eligible, that is an eligible activity under the home program.
Thank you. Um, I also noticed that, um, it indicated that your goal was to do eight thousand court enforcement, uh, activities, where are we at with meeting that goal? And if you can explain to us what those eight thousand court enforcement, uh, actions were supposed to be?
Right, so, um, that was, uh, eight thousand, um, inspections for our proactive rental inspection program, um, so we, we took additional time to ensure that we were, um, identifying all of the rental properties in Fresno. Um, so as of today, we've exceeded eighty-five thousand units registered in our rental registry, um, and to date, we are either have completed or are underway with two thousand seventy-five inspections. So while we didn't meet that specific goal at that period of time, we feel like getting the registry right will help us get to that number more quickly.
Understood, when do you anticipate meeting the goal of eight thousand inspections?
We anticipate, um, being able to address all of the multifamily properties within a year and then start on single-family as soon as we're completed with that, so because it's a percentage of the number of units within a complex, I can't tell you the exact date that we would hit that eight thousand units.
My last question, I, I've seen a lot of emails go back and forth on the Dislocation Task Force, this magical report that's being drafted and it's not available yet for the task force or the council's review, can you give us a status on when that report's gonna be made public?
Yes, council member, we are, um, updating the, uh, report on displacement, new data just came out that we are incorporating into that report, so it has the latest and greatest information, and as soon as it is ready, we will be releasing it to the public.
I, I need a more specific time, is it a week, a month, two months, um, when do you anticipate that report being available for the council's review and the task force review?
We'll certainly have it available before the task force meets.
When, when is that?
We're looking at, uh, late April or early May, right now, we're, we're in conversations with the task force members about the date.
So essentially it'll be ready in the next thirty days? Okay. Um, lastly, given that this, um, housing element has a lot of things that are in progress, um, I know you guys are working towards the eight thousand inspections, the task, this dislocation report isn't available yet, might be available in thirty days, there seems to be a lot of moving pieces that you guys are working on, I'd like to see staff come back in three months and give this council an update on all the moving pieces, including, um, where we're at with applying for state funds for the first-time homebuyer's program, the dislocation report, the analysis of that where the task force, um, is making their progress, and then of course, inspections and anything that is gonna be, um, taken into account in the budget process. So if you would come back in three months with an update, that'd be great. Thank you all.
Member Sparza.
Yeah, so I want to thank, uh, staff, thank you Sophia, and also thank you to, uh, Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, uh, who have both reached out and, uh, wanted to provide perspective on the progress of the housing element. Um, I just, you know, want to reinforce that we, as a city, I think, need to, uh, be aggressive in, in meeting the needs of the housing crisis that we have here, uh, in Fresno, and I think we need to be held accountable to the plans that we do have, uh, both internally, uh, as well as externally, uh, by, uh, outside, uh, groups. And I know the, the part that I want to contribute, um, I will be, uh, uh, bringing forward a proposal to implement enhanced infrastructure financing districts and, uh, Community Revitalization Investment Authorities as, uh, a component, not the complete solution, but, uh, component. Um, and these are ultimately multifaceted tools, uh, that can be used for parks and, and Brownsfield and such, but I know, I, I want to be using these specifically to, uh, spur affordable housing development, uh, in my district in particular and, uh, citywide. Um, and the last thing I want to say is, you know, more specific to the actual housing element is, uh, and we had, I think we had a discussion about this yesterday, Sophia, is that we, I think we have to have, you know, have a, a realistic evaluation of our housing capacity, um, I can think of, again, uh, you know, maybe a half-acre lot zone for six or seven units where, uh, you know, it's, it's not realistic that we're gonna get someone to develop on it, so we either need to, uh, I think, maybe cut that capacity and, uh, maybe trim that off and get a more realistic picture, or come up with some, uh, viable ways, um, some creative, creative viable ways on how we're gonna end up developing those properties. Thank you.
Thank you, member Sparza, city manager.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind council too, and it, this was in, uh, response to council member Arias's comments, that, um, during the budget subcommittee meetings and adoption last year, you all did, um, set aside a million dollars for affordable housing, that were still waiting for direction on how to spend, so that's all, I just wanted to remind council of that.
Thank you, city manager, and I, um, on that note, with the million dollars, I think what we want to do and kind of in the spirit of, um, tackling this issue of, of housing crisis, we're looking at a bigger plan, um, that encompasses the million dollars, and so we'll be in conversations with you guys and we'll be rolling it out, um, probably in the next, um, three weeks or so. And also just wanted to ask, um, council president, can I just ask?
Certainly.
One, one question, so, um, on that, um, draft, can we make sure that is made public as soon as possible, you said thirty days or, or so, but can also the council, um, get a copy as soon as that is available to, to be shared? And then just second, on the Cal Home issue that was raised about first-time homebuyer dollars, there is a NOFA out there for this summer, I think it's in June, um, I don't know, I would like to see this, the administration and staff, um, go apply for those dollars, um, so I'm, I guess I'm saying a courtesy right now, I just encourage folks, if we have to bring forward a resolution, um, for a specific direction, I'm happy to do that, but I know that there's an interest from this council to see us go apply for those first-time homebuyer dollars, thank you.
Screen is clear, my only suggestion would be on the maps that are presented, not with just this presentation, but all those coming from different departments, it's impossible for us to see that on our screens, so I don't know if it'd be easier to, to enlarge the map or do it by district and sequentially so we can keep up with it and see where we are, I was, I couldn't see anything in District Four, I don't know if there was or wasn't, but if we could do that, it'd make, uh, uh, make it better for us to follow your, your presentation. Thank you all very much, appreciate it, it's not an action item, so, uh, again, thank you.
Council president.
Yes.
We are working on the solution for the maps, um, some of those are very large, uh, and I don't think that would be what you would intend to see, so we're trying to come up with a happy medium. to see, but we're trying to come up with a happy medium there.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. That ends that particular item. We'll move on to 3C, actions pertaining to the 2017 TCC grant, and that is by the city manager's office.
Council president, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second by Member Sparza.
These are, all these sub-agreements, part of the transformative climate communities grant that the council received a full presentation on, and over time, we've agreed that we would bring them when they were ready for approval. So, I'm hoping that it'd be a simple yes for the council.
That's correct, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Would you still like me to make a quick presentation?
Unless someone calls for the question, we could.
Call for the question.
Yes, we had a motion by Member Arias, second by Member Soria. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you all.
And is there any opposition to the motion? It passes five zero, Member Bradfield, absent.
A public comment.
Now, I'm sorry, public comment on that item? I forgot. Anybody want to make a comment? If you would, if you can still put your comments on the record, give us your name.
I'm sorry, my name is Russell Letzinger. I live at 3256 West Clinton. I'm just curious as to know what that was involving, actually. The TCC, what does that stand for?
Sure, it's a state grant that the city received to do a series of projects in the area. Staff, you can sit down with staff and they can explain to you the projects if you'd like.
Okay. I'll just, the, the, the level of the projects, were they residential, commercial, building?
They're all different in nature, so.
Okay. All right, I'm just trying to see if it collaborates with the request that I have on hand for open discussion, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
Laura, if you can sit down and explain to the gentlemen of the public the projects. Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving right along, we will, I think we can do one more quick one. 4B Resolution Authorizing the Creation of Constituent Participation Budget Committees as a trifecta of sponsors. Member Chavez.
Thank you. First of all, fourteen years. All right, I wanted to bring this forward for consideration of the council. I know that many of us have our own networks that we work with residents, community-based organizations, church groups, schools, and so what this really does is it formalizes that process within the city of Fresno. I think one of the tough things that we deal with is really knowing what the needs and the challenges are in our neighborhoods. And so, I would, what this would do is it would formalize participatory budget approach for the city of Fresno and understanding that, you know, the needs differ from district to district. I also did include an opt-out clause there for any council member that either has their own process or, or does not want to engage in this type of approach. But I think this would be very helpful in, you know, really relating to us what the needs are in the neighborhoods at the grassroots level, working with nonprofits, with residents, church groups. And another additional benefit of implementing this approach, as we all know, when we submit grant proposals to Sacramento or DC, there's a subcategory there that makes the proposal much more marketable, which is the community input and engagement. We've seen that with a number of grants with housing, with transportation, with infrastructure investments. And so, with that, I wanted to bring this forward to the council for consideration, and I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, a motion and a second. The screen is clear, so you're not asking for any type of city funding for this project?
No.
Very good. Again, the screen is clear. Anybody else have anything to say?
Call for the question.
Can we take it to the public first? And anyone in the public wishes to comment on this, please come forward. And we will, please identify yourself again, and we'll give you three minutes.
You're between us and lunch, so. You're between us and lunch.
Try and do one more item.
Lucy Avila, Leadership Council, Justice and Accountability. I just really want to say thank you for Louise and for anybody that created this, for allowing residents to give input in such an important city process, and since they represent, since you guys represent their constituents, this will empower folks and bring people and officials closer. I'm a big believer in that community engagement that allows folks to meaningfully contribute is key to creating a strong community that takes ownership of their own neighborhood. And so, thank you guys so much for, for taking a step closer and making such an important process transparent. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak on this, please step up. Seeing none. There's a motion by Member Chavez, second by Member Soria. Is there any opposition? There is not? Okay, thank you, it's a six oh. Maybe we could do unscheduled communication real quick since we have a couple of minutes. Yeah, I have a card from Mr. Love. I'd like to come forward. You'll have three minutes. Please give us your name and address.
Name's David Love, number four. I'm going to voice all the way to Washington DC, Sacramento, the city of Fresno, the United States of America. Talking about impeaching Pollyain the Dark World Satan of her co-cones that she did towards Just wait. The organizations of her, of co-cones known as in the Holy Bible as Satan's. That's over there at City District Number Five. We're talking about, I call him Baby Satan. C.E.E.S.X.I.N.G. at the age of forty. He's the one that's been doing a lot of co-cones towards the mom population. It has been killing thousands to millions, going to billions. Of infants, baby kids, children, youth, and elders. We're talking about thousands to millions going to billions. We're talking about shoms. So, that the mom population know the Pollyain, the Dark World Satan, the poster lady, and her organization of co-cones has done co-cones harms towards Jose Bobazar. Not only that, but for three centuries. A week ago, they wanted to test I David Love, number four, out with a satellite from Elysia. You guys to witness and testify that anybody that challenges God far from heaven, Lord Jesus Christ, and Holy Father, Holy Father, will get lightning strike. Pollyain's organization, the guy that I was talking about, has killed the mom populations heaven, has killed G.P.'s Holy Spirit, has killed the AT Clan Holy Spirit, because they wanted to overtake. The mom population with Dark World of co-cones. Not only that, but Pollyain's behind a system where they're trying to hack into the Washington
Thank you, Mr. Love, for your comments. Thank you very much. Your, your time has expired. Next, we'll hear from Russell.
I'll be here two more weeks to voice again.
Thank you again for being here.
I believe that Elysian's here or trying to hide something.
Russell, are you here? I have a card, there you are, didn't see you behind our last speaker. If you give us your name and address, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. First, I would like to say my name is Russell Letzinger. I live at 3256 West Clinton. I want to thank you guys for your time, your diligence, and your patience. A couple of weeks back, I came in and I presented an idea that I actually have an architectural drawing on. I do a little bit of architectural drafting and design as well as building and remodeling. A friend of mine and I were speaking, and he came up with an idea of a shower station focused on the homeless but also the community at large, that it'd be available just, just like you have a laundromat, just like you have a gas station, you have a place to go and bathe. A shower station, I've been in, in communication with lock systems as well as a water timer system company, and as far as finding out the exact funding that it would take to do that, to get this thing, a foundation in the ground, get this thing plumbed, all eco-friendly with solar paneling to produce the electricity that's involved, electric water heaters so that there's no gas emissions or anything like that with it, but that it would mainly focus on the homeless population, being able to give them an opportunity to not only get bathed so they can go in for a job interview, but also to be able to cut down on the level of disease that's being spread and transferred throughout the community. I'm in the construction industry, like I was saying, and there's times that I'm so busy that I can't, don't have time to make it to shower before another appointment, I mean, to make it home to do that. But something like that would be fantastic. I know a lot of people that are in RVs and stuff like that where they don't have those resources available to them, and I think that if there was a couple of those stations throughout the county, that it would, it would drastically reduce the spread of disease and funk and everything else like that, and give these people an opportunity to maybe get back on their feet. Give them a shower, man, let them clean up, get a job, take an opportunity to get a job. Last time I was here, I'll make this really fast, they sent me to the mayor's office to go speak to H.P., I believe was his name. I went directly from here over to there, and I have still yet to be able to speak to that gentleman. I went over there and somehow I had missed him, but then they told me to call. I called to no avail. I tried to email him to no avail. This is a need, I believe, in the community.
If I, if I could get your contact information, I'll make sure that meeting happens with you.
I would fantastically appreciate that.
I'll come down and get your information.
Thank you, ma'am. I got a fantastic design for it that I'll be trying to patent. I, I don't want the glory or the recognition for it, I just want the need to be addressed for these people, that's all.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And anyone else for unscheduled communication?
Thank you.
Seeing none. We're about to adjourn for lunch. I want to thank my colleagues for working with me this morning, and appreciate it. I'll see you all at 1:30. We have just a few more items. a few more items. You now are ready to vote, is there any opposition? Seeing none, it carries 6-0, congratulations Nelson, you've got a lot of work ahead of you.
All right.
All right. I think we're ready for closed session.
All right.
And I think the city attorney has some announcements to make.
Yes, closed session, we have two items, first, existing litigation, Johannes versus City of Fresno, and then also, existing litigation, City of Fresno versus Garni.
I think I need to go to the public, if there's any one of the public wishes to comment on those items, please come forward, seeing none. We'll take our adjournment for closed session, we will be back here hopefully about no later than 2:00 PM. Thank you very much. Oops, Gary, there's Gary. Okay, we have all the council members present, and we're ready to start our timed item for 2:00. So this is a resolution advancing the quote "help us help Fresno" close quote initiative to address panhandling, this is subject to veto, it's sponsored by members Berthfield, Arias, and Capriolio. So Gary, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm gonna address this, but the chief, the city manager's concerned about your time, so you know, last time it was very lengthy, how's your time? Because if you need to speak first, or you got a half an hour, I'll make sure you get up here before we're okay for right now. Okay, okay, so what I would like to do is first play a video put forward by Leadership Fresno, which addresses the whole issue that we're here talking about today, which is panhandling, and I think it will address some of the issues that we may talk about and get into. So if you could play that.
We define homelessness in three ways. Situational homelessness can be you and I today, we lose our house, we lose our apartment, we're out on the streets, and the rescue mission provides about 90% of what we do is for situational homelessness. The next is the addicted and the mentally ill, and the addicted and mentally ill are about 80% of those that you see outside. The third are urban campers, that's their title, not ours, and urban campers are people who have chosen a lifestyle of gleaning, if you will, and living off the land. I would say today, there are on average around 600 people who are truly homeless that we see in the streets every day here in the City of Fresno.
Rock, rock, rock on the pillow, everybody talking, everybody walking down at the paparero.
So our day starts pretty early, at about 6:00 AM, and we spend the first two to three hours around the area of the Paparero House and the Rescue Mission. We go through there, and we make sure everybody wakes up and cleans up their area, we work with a full-time sanitation crew. The reality is, is that homelessness isn't a law enforcement issue, it's a society issue.
But we can either choose to be right up next to him, or under his wings, or...
It's kind of hard, because most people, when you're homeless, they look down upon you, and they kind of treat you differently, you know? I've been on and off on the streets, you know, kind of doing the homeless thing for quite some time, I'd say about four years.
I came from a good background, a good family, just along the way I made some poor choices that eventually led me to homelessness. It's really surprising, but people, they make a lot of money, sometimes we would make like at least $200, $250. When people would give me money, I would usually use it to go and buy drugs.
Wow, your seemingly good deed of maybe handing out a dollar, buying some food, seems at the time a very good idea, because you're helping that one subject. Unfortunately, I think the reality of that is, is that you're simply enabling that person to stay on the street a little bit longer, because the core of why these folks are living out on the street isn't physical poverty, it's not lack of money, it's not lack of food, although that's a symptom of what's going on. The core reality is much deeper, that no $1, $20, or hamburger's gonna fix. We need to stop all trying to figure this out on our own, and coming up with 1,000 different solutions, and come together with one solution.
Educating the community to give them that $1, that $5, that $20, to a nonprofit like ourselves, that we double what it is that we could do for that client, or that individual, that that $20 bill is gonna do, which is gonna cause death on, unfortunately, that person that you're giving that money out to. And it wasn't until a local constituent of Fresno put it out in the paper, that said, every time you give a dollar, $5, $20 to my son out on the street, it's one day closer to his death. That's reality, and that's what we live with on a day-to-day basis.
I would say to anyone who is trying to offer in-kind donations, whether it's blankets, jackets, tents, food, gift cards, I would tell them that everything on the streets is barterable, people trade, it is literally a old west situation, and the moment that I get a brand-new tent, I'm going to sell that tent for drugs and alcohol. On any given day, we have 48 beds that are available for anyone in our community, 17 on average are filled, so it's not that the space isn't available, but the want to change has to be had on the client's side.
When I wanted to change my life, there was a defining moment, and that moment would have been when I was sleeping on the curb, and it was starting to get cold, and so I had finally come to a point where I was broken, I decided to give the mission a shot.
Rescue the Children provided me a place to change my life. I stopped using, I started applying for work, and I finally found a job. It's never too late to change, if you really are willing to change, that there are people and there are places out there that are willing to give you a hand in doing that.
The only hope that these people have is that the community stops looking at them as a negative, and starts looking at them for what they are, which is, these are folks that are lost. If there's 600 folks out there, there's 600 different reasons why they're out there, and let's get them out of the sidewalks and the gutters, and get them the help they need.
I would say the safe path for most people is relationships.
Since I've been to the mission, it feels like that it's my home. I've developed relationships which have not only helped me to feel more secure about who I am, it's just nice to know that there are people out there who still care.
Not that homeless people don't need the help, because they do, giving money and just like supporting that, and helping them become more dependent on that is just not the way to go.
The best way to help our homeless in the city is for each one of us to research the organizations who are already providing to the homeless population. The thing we shouldn't do is to keep them homeless. Every time that we hand out money, every time we hand a McDonald's gift card, every time we lovingly provide a tent, or a blanket, or a jacket, we're leaving people outside. That might make us feel really good for the moment, the reality is, we're keeping them homeless.
Everybody talking, everybody walking down at the paparero. My knees are a-knocking, my baby is a-puffing, down at the paparero. My best p-puffin' Mike, they treat you all right, down at the paparero.
Thank you, I understand the mayor has an appointment he has to go to, did you want to speak, mayor, and then we can let you out of here, appreciate that.
Here to speak in support of this item by the three council members, I think it's a big step in the right direction, directing, Fresno has a great heart, people want to give, this provides the opportunity to give in a constructive way, going to the places that will help people, and never forget, every homeless person out there is a human tragedy, brothers and sisters, in some cases daughters, so I fully support this idea and wish you the best of luck. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, thank you.
Thank you, mayor, greatly appreciate it. Could you put up the sign up on here? Up there, the red sign. Okay, before I start getting into the specifics, I want to thank Councilmen Chavez and Capriolio a couple of weeks ago, and our former colleague, for bringing the stop ordinance. It didn't pass, but their motivation was to do something about this issue, and that's the motivation of myself and my colleagues today. We are all in this, trying to resolve a very significant problem. So let me tell you what this resolution is not about. It's not about fining anyone, it's not about banning panhandling, it's not about fining people who donate to panhandlers, it's not about any of that. What it is about is trying to address a very serious problem in our community, and a problem that if we don't really address it in any successful way is just going to worsen. Now, we're a very generous city, we've got a big heart, a lot of people in our community want to help, but giving to panhandlers, as the video pointed out, from people who are professionals, just keeps those panhandlers in the same place, it keeps them out on the street, doesn't really help them at all, keeps them homeless, if they have a drug or alcohol problem, it keeps them buying drugs and buying alcohol, and there are some who are also scamming people, who are not any of those things, but they find it a way to make money. So they prey on people who are very generous, and take their money. The fact is, we don't want to end up having the same kind of problems that San Francisco, LA, and San Diego has, where there's homeless everywhere, where there are people sleeping out in the street everywhere, where they're defecating in the street, where there are needles everywhere, where it's a public safety hazard, where it's a public safety issue with people running out into the street, we don't want that. And after the ordinance a couple of weeks ago failed, I spoke to Councilmember Arias, who came in, we talked, and he said, I want to do something about the problem too, and we need to come up with something positive. And so we got together, along with Councilmember Capriolo, as well as Chief Dyer, and we came up with a way to educate the public, because that's really what it's about. Once we have people not giving money to panhandlers on street corners, and that money dries up, they will be forced to seek help, they'll be forced to seek services, and that's what it's about. It's about accountability and responsibility, as long as people give them money, you are basically helping them remain out there. And that's not something we want to do. So the sign, is there any way to put it up here? Okay, well, can you turn that sign around then, Danny? Yeah, because I wanted to address it. Okay, so, the sign simply says, "Help Us Help Fresno." Now, we've looked at other communities, they have signs, usually it says at the very top, "Panhandling." Now, people felt, obviously, that that's a much more negative message, and my colleagues and I, and the police chief, went through many revisions, and we really came up with "Help Us Help Fresno," which is a very positive message. It says, "Contribute to the solution," and that's what it's about, contributing to the solution is contributing to people who are in the trenches, helping those who need help. Contributing to panhandlers is not the solution, it's the problem, it's what keeps them there. And if there is no money for panhandlers to get on street corners, they won't be on the street corners, and they'll be more likely to be seeking help, which is what we want them to do. So the sign says, "No to Panhandling, give to local charities," and we're going to have a text number that people can actually text their donations, that will go into an account at City Hall, and during budget, that money will be allocated to nonprofits. Now, we have no specific nonprofits that we have in mind at this point to give to, I mean, we know many that are very successful at doing what they're doing, we support them at the budget every year. This would be no different. We have many nonprofits who seek our support, we support them, this would be just another funding... This would be just another funding source that will help them. And so we will determine that at budget time. Now, we also wanted to help people if they truly wanted to get off the streets, we've provided a number there. And that's the Fresno Rescue Mission. Now, the Fresno Rescue Mission is available 24/7. There is no other 24/7 phone number. I took all the possible numbers where you could contact people, and the only one that truly responds 24/7 is the Fresno Rescue Mission. And so that is the number we have there, because we truly want to be of help to people. Now, the number will eventually become 559-5-GO-HOPE. That's the number to the Rescue Mission. And again, they're available 24/7. Now, we also want to help our business community, because our business community at times gets negatively impacted by people panhandling right outside their business. We see it at Herndon and Blackstone all the time. And when I hold district meetings and I'm meeting with my constituents, they express to me the discomfort they feel in approaching businesses where people are outside hustling them for money. So we got to help our businesses. And our businesses can have these signs as well and put them in their window. Again, we want to be helpful to our entire community. Now, our constituents expect us to deal with this problem in a successful way. Every district meeting I have, the number-one issue is about homelessness and panhandling, every single time. There is no perfect solution. No one is suggesting this is the perfect solution. But this is part of the solution. And to not support this, from my perspective, is to abdicate our responsibility to our constituents. This is a very positive solution. And the people who know that it is are the people who deal with it every day. We want to be helpful to the people who truly need help. There are services to be provided. There are service providers who want to provide services. Now, we know there are some people who, no matter what you offer them, they don't want the help. We've had our homeless task force captain come before us, who've made over several thousand contacts with people, offering them services. And they told us that less than 1% accessed or wanted those services. That's sad. That's unfortunate. So those who want help, we're providing it on the sign. Just contact that number. And when people truly want to help, we want them to be of help. But donate to the local charities. Don't donate to people who are on street corners, because you're not helping them. You're keeping them right where they are. You're fueling their addiction. You're not helping them with mental illness. Mental illness needs to be treated. And going untreated is not going to be helpful to them. So that's what this is about. I want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Capriolo and Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Arias provided some invaluable insight and suggestions into making this very positive. And I listened to him. He made tremendous contributions, as did our police chief. So I would like to make the motion for this resolution to be adopted. And the one final thing I'd like for discussion, and I heard this suggestion from somebody on the radio, I'd like to see these signs also be on our buses that travel throughout the city of Fresno. And that would be quite a positive message for our community as they're traversing through the city to let people know and reinforce the message. We want to be helpful. There's a way to be helpful. If you want help, here's the number to contact. So with that, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Police Chief, I understand there's some time constraints, so please feel free to come on up. And again, Police Chief Jerry Dyer, thank you for all of your support. And I want to let people know, your comments and input on this has been invaluable.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak on this issue. And I spoke, as you know, three weeks ago at this very podium, expressing my opposition to the ordinance that was being proposed at that time, which was a stop. And the reason I voiced my opposition at that time was because I felt it went too far, that it was far-reaching in the fact that it was going to, it relied heavily on enforcement, enforcement of us issuing citations not only to those individuals who were asking for money, but also for people that were giving out of the generosity of their heart. And I felt that that was going to create a negative environment for us in the police department, in the fact that our folks were going to lose support of the community. And so I did not want that to occur. I also felt it created unrealistic expectation of that our officers are going to be responding to those types of calls. I believe this ordinance that is currently being proposed strikes a good balance. It is primarily for the purpose of education. It is awareness. It allows folks to truly understand at that point where they're about ready to give, what that giving ultimately does, and it is enable individuals on the streets to remain in that lifestyle. And that's not what we want to do, and that's really not what they want to do either. So it's a friendly reminder. It doesn't rely on enforcement. And so that's one of the reasons I support this. And it also gives people an opportunity to transfer that generosity from that individual to organizations that are out there who we know, Fresno Rescue Mission, the Paparillo House, Salvation Army, et cetera, those individuals that are able to stretch the dollars that we provide to them so that they can meet the needs of those individuals in the community. And then lastly, it provides them an opportunity to get the services that they need through this 24-hour hotline that can be taken advantage of. I know that anytime we speak about issues of panhandling or homelessness, it creates a divide, understandably so, and it is contentious. But I do believe this strikes the right balance. I'm fully supportive of the ordinance and the resolution as it is currently written, and for the signage to be placed at locations as determined by the council, and for the monies to be sent and divided amongst those organizations as decided by the council, those organizations that are doing good work in our community. So I applaud your effort, and I encourage the council to support this ordinance.
Thank you, Chief.
I agree with all the comments that have been made thus far. It's taken a lot of energy to get where we are today. We had a lot of input from various people, and the net effect is what you see before us today. And Councilmember Brettafield led that charge, and we appreciate that. It was a pleasure to serve with you and come up with what we feel is a reasonable alternative for what we're doing. So thank you, and thank you, Pigeal, for working this out with all of us. And I look forward to voting on this item. Pigeal?
Sure. Thank you. First, before I begin with my comments, I want to thank the five, six people that contacted me over the last few days over this item. Dee Barnes, Mike Rhodes, Nancy Flynn, Gene Richards, Myra Coe, Emily Brandon. I got into this conversation because I wanted to make sure that there was some basic principles adhered to as we're discussing our homeless and underserved population and residents in the city. And the first principle I wanted to make sure is that any proposal that impacts our residents protected all residents' constitutional right to give and receive charity irrespective of what location they're at. Irrespective of whether it was an intersection, a park, a grocery store, a retail mall, that anybody's constitutional right to give and receive charity in the city of Fresno was going to be protected. And it would be, they would never have to fear any penalty from the city or public safety officers that are charged with keeping our city safe. Secondly, that we would find a better method to help raise money, what I would call a 21st-century method, to contribute to the organizations and individuals who provide resources to our most needy. I think the text feature does that. It's not perfect, but it's a start. And third, that anybody who was in need of help would have an easy way to call for it and to receive it if they chose to. This proposal does that today. It allows folks to call one number. I know there's been some concerns about what that number is and what that organization that is. Unfortunately, we don't have too many options in the city of Fresno as we speak. So we're doing the best that we can with the hearts, with the cards that we've been dealt. Additionally, we added a couple of safeguards. One is that neighborhoods, residents and council members would ultimately determine where their signage was placed in their neighborhoods, where they supported it. We're a very diverse city. Some parts of town are more progressive, more accepting, more encouraging. And for those that wanted, they should be able to have them. Those that feel they're not warranted or needed should not have it imposed on them. And lastly, that this conversation wasn't one that demeaned any human life in Fresno, that we didn't talk about people as a problem, but that we try to build up a city. I'm open to suggestions from my colleagues on how we can make it better. I'm open to suggestions from the public. Those of you who've reached out to us and provided us some of those suggestions, thank you for that. I try to respond to everyone who had questions about how we got here, and I want to clarify viewpoints from the questions that I received. One, the benefactors of whatever money we raise won't be strictly limited to faith-based organizations. Two, we know that we haven't done our part yet as a city to build low-barrier shelters. We recognize that. Couple months ago, my council colleague Chavez and I chaired a committee to distribute more than $3 million for a significant amount of housing, the most housing we've ever had for rapid rehousing, triage, and low-barrier shelters. Now, it'll take us a couple more months before we're able to be in a position to open up those shelters. We recognize that. Is it enough? Not yet. We need to do more. We're clearly in a housing crisis across the city, and we have a responsibility to do more. There was also some concerns expressed about that this was going to be a demeaning approach for a population that doesn't need one more layer of difficulty or systematic oppression. We're trying to be extremely thoughtful of that. So as a member who co-sponsored this ordinance, I did so because I wanted to have a different conversation in the city of Fresno that didn't result like the one we had a month ago. That did nothing but result in a divisive experience that didn't reflect the needs, the people, and the human lives that were responsible for improving as a city. If my council colleagues, members of the public, I'm all open ears, if you have some suggestions, some concerns, express them today. We'll address every single question. More importantly, it'll be several months before we're in a position as a city to implement this proposal. It's going to take us some time to figure out a lot of the details. So this is a time for us to have that input, get that dialogue, address the concerns. And personally speaking, from my experience, I've had siblings who've been on the street corners, who've been homeless, who've been in cardboard shelters. I know what it's like. I know what it takes for people to get there. Also know what it takes, the toll it takes on our family, and what it takes to get people out of there. Not everyone is ready, not everyone's willing, but everyone deserves decency, respect, and the humanity that we have a God-given right for. So I hope we have a good conversation. Please know that we're completely open, at least I am, for making improvements and for whatever you bring forward to the table. So with that, I will deal my time and listen to the public and my colleagues.
Now that we've had the conference and dialogue from the sponsors of the motion, we'll go out to the public now. I have cards. Forgive me if I don't pronounce your name correctly. First up is Paul Elzondo. After, Paul will be Gonzalo Arambula, and then Linda Guerrero. So Paul, are you here? If you'll all come down with you. Paul? Okay, then we'll start with Gonzalo Arambula. Please come and join us down here, sir, and if you'll give us your name and address. After, Paul will be, I'm sorry, Gonzalo will be Linda Guerrero, and then Alyssa Stevens.
Members of the council, I have some concerns. Within the last month, I spoke with one of your deputies, Mr. Arias, regarding being rejected by two programs. One of them is Gateway West Care Unit in Gateway Boulevard. I was thrown out from a hotel with a program that was provided from welfare department. Just because I don't, I don't, or refused to, broke my contract with my SSISDI case, they throw me out of the streets. Now, as far as I know, they committed welfare fraud. West Care Gateway Unit committed welfare fraud, besides throwing me to the streets. One more thing, they referred me to a group, the one is called Blue Skies, or Pathway Blue Skies. And they also refused to provide me any kind of housing, not even a room. Now, what is this, is the kind of service that is supposed to be provided? It is no sense. Now, what I'm asking to the city council of Fresno is to help people like me. I don't have addiction, I don't drink, and I don't have any necessity for alcohol or any of those kind of things. I have three tops of arthritis in my knees and also my left hand, and I'm in a wheelchair, legal handicap since 1997. When I'm asking to these groups and to the city council just to provide me a roof, then I can continue my work, and I start with your prior city councilman, Mr. Oliver Baines, such as patrolling the handicap spaces and do something for the community. Why? Because I'm already classified as a legal handicap, and I'm already in disability. I cannot work legally. I have to stay out of the borderline. Now, if this is existence, existent, that many people like myself, then I know a paparillo, then they need a roof over their heads, and it's not being provided. Why? Because at 24 hours a day from Rescue Mission, it doesn't answer. It doesn't answer at all from midnight until about 2:00 or 3:00 AM. So it need to be checked out, that one. And please, help us. I don't have anything that I need, just a roof.
Thank you very much. And I want to remind everyone, we're talking about the panhandling ordinance at this time. We can do some regular communications after we finish this item. So Linda Guerrero is next, Alyssa, and then Mike Rhodes. Thanks for being here, Linda.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I see these homeless-proposed signs as a waste of money. It's not really addressing the issue. Homeless, these are people that don't have a home. What we ought to be doing as a city is looking at finding affordable housing, perhaps allocating money where homeless people can camp, where there's shower and toilet facilities, similar to a KOA, that would be affordable for them. I see the proposed sign as an eyesore. Most people don't have the time to stop and read a sign. It's not going to do any good. The sign is going to be an opportunity for graffiti artists to tag them, or some people even like to steal the signs because they can recycle the metal. So I'm against the sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Linda. Alyssa, Mike Rhodes, and then Jordan Fitzpatrick. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President Capriolo, Vice President Arias, members of the council. Alyssa Stevens here, representing the Fresno Chamber of Commerce, 2331 Fresno Street, also representing our membership of over 1,200 businesses and 78,000 employees. Our organization would like to express its support for the "Help Us Help Fresno" resolution. We all recognize that homelessness and panhandling are issues that are a symptom of a deeper problem, and that this resolution may not address those problems directly. This is a good first step towards encouraging those that need help to receive the services available to them. Nonprofit organizations in town that provide services to the homeless are better equipped to evaluate and address the needs of these individuals than the average citizen driving around town. And "Help Us Help Fresno" provides an option for the generous folks in Fresno to maximize the impact their gift will have through these local nonprofits. We encourage an eye vote from you today, and we also stand ready to help this council and community partners to continue to find solutions to this complex issue of homelessness in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Rhodes, and then Jordan Fitzpatrick, and Des Martinez.
Mike Rhodes, 47, 73 North Arthur in Fresno. I oppose the proposed purchase... I oppose the proposed purchase of signs to discourage helping the homeless in their struggle to survive. We should not be spending public money to try and starve homeless people into submission. This approach has been tried in the recent past in various forums, and the results are obvious. We need money on enforcing, we spend money on enforcing ordinances that attack the homeless. No camping, no pushing shopping carts, no asking for money from Median Islands, and now this heartless proposal. And these cruel measures could end homelessness. You would see, you would not see any homeless people in Fresno. As one of our city council members said recently, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. I agree. Here's what I think we should be doing. We should build the low-barrier homeless shelter that the city council recently authorized funding for. We should rescind all ordinances that have been passed by previous city council members that harm the homeless. We should establish safe and legal sites where homeless can go. These can be restored abandoned buildings owned by the city or county, or it could be on vacant land owned by the city or county. These sites will have basic public services like drinking water, toilets, trash pickup, and electricity. All homeless people will be provided with whatever social services they need to live a healthy and happy life. That might be job training, mental health services, or alcohol and drug abuse treatment. All homeless people will have the access to decent and affordable housing. Homeless people are just, homeless people are our brothers and sisters who need to be treated with dignity and respect, just like you would like to be treated if you became homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very, excuse me, thank you very much. Jordan, you're up, and then again, Des Martinez, and then after Des will be Aline, looks like, Reed. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jordan Fitzpatrick. I live at 541 North Fulton Street. I live in Miguel Arias's district, and I'm extremely disappointed in your proposal of this ordinance. I think that this money, which was stated would be starting at $20,000, would be much better used to actually help the homeless rather than put up signs that further, put, further put negative light on the homeless. And if you don't want homeless people, then actually do something to help them not be homeless. We need, they need shelter, they need food. We need more shelters. There's not enough room in the shelters. People aren't just choosing to sleep on the streets because they want to. They're sleeping there because they have nowhere else to go. And I'm also here to represent the transgender community, where there is currently no single residential homeless shelter that accepts transgender people. And lesbian, gay, bisexual people also do not feel welcome in most shelters, especially the Fresno Rescue Mission, which is a religious organization. And this amounts to basically an advertisement for the Fresno Rescue Mission. The number goes to the Fresno Rescue Mission. You just had us watch a video advertising the Fresno Rescue Mission. And I, I don't, I mean, if the Fresno Rescue Mission wants to advertise their services, as discriminatory as they are, they should use the CEO's $100,000 a year and use that money to advertise, not use the Fresno City Council's money, Fresno City's money to, to add, sorry, I'm very pissed off right now. This money could be used in much more effective ways than putting useless signs around our city that do nothing at all to help the homeless. Thanks.
Thank you, Jordan. Next is Des Martinez, Aline Reed, and then Yanis Paulus. Good afternoon.
Hello, how are you guys doing? Des Martinez, and I just got my place, but I don't want to give my address. Do you have to? I think $20,000 is a lot. I believe it's gonna be more than that that's actually gonna be spent on this. Spending $20,000 on metal with vinyl on it is quite a bit of money. And I do think that some of that money could go towards other things, like... Lisa Oliveras, age 50, Frank DeRosa, age 65, Carlos Rodriguez, age 64, Rogelio Cahu Antango, 54, Jonathan McCaffey, 59, James Reese, 55, Herman Peralta, 57, Kenneth Carr, 74, Gregory Costa, 31, Marian Curtis, 49, Renee Price, 53, Roy Lasagna, 51, Joe Sorando, 21, Charles Maxwell, 53, Ray Charles Chapman, 49, Joey Hunt, 61, Agostino Reyes, 26, Arlene Yang, 48, Pravid Salvinak, 55, Brenner Blance, 57, Daniel Miller, 62, Dean Wildler, 60, Ann Sharon Moore, 74, Martha Felipe, 47, La Quintia Cotner, 56, Mike Rutner, 50, Manuel Rojas, 56, Timothy Delgunia, 53, Rene Castro, 50, Charles Blastell, 61, Gregory Sandoro, 48, Herman Maylin, 44, Juana Luna, 32, Patricia Murphy, 53, Robert Huel, 62, Janet Hernandez, 40, Jerry Wildler, 61, Eddie Wright, 65, Andres Perez Cervantes, 30, Francisco Sanchez, 41, Cruz Carentilneo, 31, Richard Monas, 65, Franklin Byron Shows, 63, James Hubert, 60, Larry Wirick, 71, Carlos Fields, 61, Rodolfo Rivas, 53, Cobb Vangher, 34, Gregory Douglas, 53, Alejandro Lopez, 70, Rebecca Flyer, 55, Coias Jade Davis, 58, George Sutherland, 59, Manuel Santos, 65, Christina Calkins, 32, Randy Swinker, 59, Carmen Sanchez, 43, David Alvarado, 58, Casey Whiteley, 58, Dor Er, 46, Roland DiAntio, 70, Misty Gonzalez, 41.
Can you wrap it up? Your time is out, please.
I got like 20 more names, but those are all the people that were living on the streets of homeless that have died in 365 days here in Fresno, California.
Des, go ahead and complete the names.
Estevan Martinez, 35, Mo Vang, 43, Richard Evans, 58, Robbie Garrison, 80, Chester Ahays, 54, Clifford Gray, 67, Sierra Bowman, 33, Rogelio Villa, 38, Joshua Blanton, 44, Abel Martinez, 46, and Colorajo Medrid Regal, 63. May they all rest in peace, but they died on your streets here in Fresno, California. I think we can spend the money on something else.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Aline Reed, welcome. If you could give us your name and address, we'd appreciate that.
Sure, thank you. My name is Aline Reed. I live at 1128 East Yale here in Fresno, and so I think I'm in Councilwoman Soria's district. I wish that I had seen some of you at this Monday's Poor People's Campaign event, the statewide event, but I'm talking here today as a private citizen. It really hurts me to see the city spending $20,000 on signs that are only in English, not in Spanish, not in Mong. Maybe that's coming down the pipeline, but I think it's a waste of money to spend money for something like this. I agree with Jordan that it seems to me, from what I've seen on TV, that you are endorsing the Rescue Mission, which I question this political body as a separation of church and state. From what I understand, the Rescue Mission does pretty much demand that people attend services, that they listen to religious material, and I don't think that it's up to them to decide who needs to be saved and who doesn't just because they're homeless. The second thing is, and this is something the Councilwoman Arias did mention, about the low-barrier shelters. I understand that $1.3 million has been allocated. I think the city of Fresno would be better served going ahead and building those shelters because a lot of charities, and I'm not pointing a finger at Rescue Mission or at Pavarello House, which I have contributed to over the years, but it just seems to me that most charities spend three-quarters of their money on administrative things and not direct services. And so, with that said, I'm just worried that the reason that this is so big of a problem is because the homeless have spread out from downtown Fresno and west Fresno and southeast Fresno to other parts of the city. And this is a big problem for those people who don't want to deal with the poor. Poor People's Campaign was talking about this on Monday, and none of you showed up. None of you. We had empty chairs for all of you with your names attached to it. So, all I'm saying is that when you keep in mind that you're dealing with real human beings and not just pieces of trash, keep that in mind, that we did reach out to you, but you didn't have time for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Yanis Paulus, followed by Brandy Viegas, and then Patricia Wells.
Hello, sir.
Hello. Good afternoon. I come to you with a heavy heart today. We lost a veteran in Austin, Texas. He suicided at the VA in a waiting room as of Tuesday. I guarantee you, nine out of 10, he was homeless with PTSD. Okay? One in three Vietnam veterans have PTSD severely, and they're homeless, untreated till right now. So, I don't know when we're gonna turn the corner. You know, use this money towards a building. I truly believe it's gonna be a waste. Like this one lady said, you know, people are gonna graffiti, graffiti our buses and everything else that I see in town. You know, we really gotta, I'm speaking to you from my heart, man. I'm a devastated man. I'm dealing with death on a daily basis. We just lost three veterans last month due to homelessness here in Fresno. So, I'm just like, when are we gonna talk about building a building instead of making a sign? What's that sign's gonna do for somebody with PTSD? What is that gonna do? You sending them to a religious, somebody with PTSD is not gonna understand that. We need help, low-barrier shelter. We need to, we had the 10-year plan, fell flat in this face, and it's like, there's more homelessness than ever. There's probably 3,000 right now on the ground. The point in time is useless. We do the point in time, and they get $20,000. Where's that money go? So, we really need some solutions. I'm tired of suicides. You know, we have 22 a day at the VA. That's probably, that's probably higher, maybe 30 or 40, nobody knows. So, please, the guy that, the guy and the girl that's holding the sign, most likely, they're a veteran that you call a bum. So, please, man, rethink this, and it's not a good, it's not a solution at all. It's gonna be a hindrance. Thank you.
Thank you, Yanis. Next is Brandy. If you could give us your name and address for the record, then Patricia Wells, and then Cruz Rodriguez.
Brandy is Viegas, 713 East Andrews Avenue, District 7, as far as this district. I appreciate your, your efforts to try to find a solution. I know that it's been difficult. I appreciate the idea of outreach and anything that would help with, sorry, I just realized I grabbed the wrong notes. Anything that would help be able to connect people to resources better and be able to help people get connected. But I have some problems with the sign, and I hope I grab, get the right notes in time. But some of the things is, I don't think it's helpful to take away, sorry, to tell people not to give to panhandlers, as it can take away the food, water, or resources that might be needed at that moment. Someone in the press conference yesterday said that they hope that this would discourage someone who might be ready to give, see the sign, and then realize what they're doing is wrong and not give. But why they may need more resources, what they might need for that moment to survive might be that. And this ordinance is presuming that that's not true, that they, that these, the people who are there at that moment are a lifeline. And I, more importantly, the reason why I'm here is I feel like it's discouraging, that is, that I, I feel like this will affect vulnerable people who will be affected by this, by discouraging help. The idea is often perpetuated that panhandlers do this to make a lot of money, and there are people who do that. However, panhandlers include vulnerable groups, including, who aren't even homeless, like the elderly, disabled families who are, aren't homeless, but don't have enough even after benefits and whatever they can get. They may not have enough for, for rent, food, and medication. They may not have a good way to get to where they can get resources. They, they may be people who are, they're, I found that people are trying to get services, but, and that, but they're in the process, and they don't have enough for that day. I know people like this. I've talked to people. I know people who are discouraged, someone who I met yesterday who, who can't afford rent and needs money for a battery for a wheelchair. And the presumption is that they don't want to seek services, and people say that, but that is not true. There is a lot of people who are in, seeking services, and they're just hitting a wall or they're in the middle of that, and they need help. And truthfully, we do not have consistent services to be able to have people, to help people, even with things like food. You know, Pavarello House doesn't serve food on Sundays. There's other places that don't serve. Regarding shelters, we know there's not enough room. We know that even with the more shelters, there won't be enough room, and not everyone will qualify. There is people, I heard from a police officer and someone from the hero team in the last two months, tell people that there's, that it's full, that there's not enough room. And I know that they're working on this, but in the meantime, it's, we need, that people need lifelines. There's people that I, you know, there's people who are, who feel like it's dangerous and won't go down there. I'm out of time. So, I encourage you, there is others, there's other solutions. We need things for, when it's hot, for a place to be, but also consider that there is no, that there are people, they are seeking help, but in the meantime, they need help where, where we can get it.
Thank you, Brandy. Appreciate it. Next is Patricia Wells. Patricia will be followed by Cruz Rodriguez, and then that's all the cards we have, but we'll have more opportunity to speak.
Hello. My name's Patricia Wells, and I live at 414 North Park on Mr. Arias's district. And I want to say that I do give to the Dakota Eco Gardens, because I know the fantastic people who started that, and I do give to them. I walk every day from my home, which is on this side of Belmont, all the way to the Tower District, every day. For years now, I have watched homeless people be slowly dying on the way because they get so skinny, they don't get enough, enough food to eat. So, eventually, I've made friends, I've made friends with some of them. And one of them, for example, is Daniel, who had grown up in my, in my neighborhood, but he said, "I did some bad things," and he's in a wheelchair. He is not a drug addict, he's not an alcoholic, but he's always hungry. So, he's always pushing himself in the wheelchair. Inevitably, my husband and I give him some money so he can eat. I've seen a young white guy who's sleeping in the streets over there by the Bank of America, abandoned, and I saw him getting skinnier and skinnier. I tell my husband, you know, we do watch them die. They've been dying slowly, as they have been saying over here, they die. And this, this kid was, was, I happened to have some money on me, and I gave him some money. You should have seen the look on his face because he was gonna eat that morning. And another thing, another friend of mine that comes to my home when she's hungry, she's a little younger than me. I met her before she was homeless. It's too much for me to handle. I'm a low-income person myself. But Louise, whenever she comes to my home, I give her some food. And I told her, "Why don't you go to the Pavarello House?" I told her. "Why don't you go to the Rescue Mission?" She goes, "Are you kidding? You can die there." She said, "It's really dangerous for a woman. It's dangerous for anybody." And what, you know, I realize, somebody needs to help these homeless people eat, and somebody needs to have them, they need, they need shelter from the sun, you know? During these cold days, they were sleeping anywhere that they could get some, some, a little, a little space on the, on the ground. And to put those signs up, it's really cruel. Can you imagine the tourists that come here? Forget about the waste of money. What are you telling homeless people? You're nothing, see? And people shouldn't give you money, people shouldn't help you. And that's my, you know, forget about the $20,000. How you... And that's my, you know, forget about the 20,000, how you making those people feel? I know a lot of these people. I can't help them anymore because I don't have enough money, but let me tell you, they've all gotten a lot skinnier. We need to have better solutions. You know, they need shelter, they need food, they need, they need, they need to be taken care of. And yes, there have been some vets, one of the vets, he's almost dead. He's, he's in a wheelchair. And what he does, he drinks every day, and I guess that's what anybody would do if you had no other hope in life. What would you do? You know, just sit there? So, and die quietly? Anyhow, I'm just asking you, Señor Arias, please to think about solutions. I mean, all the other cities that we see on the internet, in Seattle, and other places where they have homes and communities, where they have little, little places they can start on their own. And yes, people do, are on, on drugs, they are on alcohol, but I understand, this city has been given millions, and they didn't do anything about it. So that's, that's my plea to you, is that you must find some solutions for these people. They're hungry. I mean, if you were walking there every day, you would see too, how they're getting skinnier and skinnier. Have a heart. Fresno has to have a heart. We're not a cruel city, and we're not cruel people. That's all.
Thank you, Patricia. Next is Cruz, and then I have one more card from Matt Dildine. So Cruz Rodriguez, thank you for being here. Give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. And then Matt Dildine, and then I think that's the last card.
Good afternoon. Cruz Rodriguez, address 1737 South Gerhart. How vile is it that the city has normalized using terminology like concern for the homeless as doublespeak for concern about homeless people, not necessarily concern for homeless human beings? I think it's an absolutely despicable thing to pursue any kind of visual communication that indicates that homeless people should be alienated and relegated to institutions as opposed to being recognized as neighbors in neighborhoods where they belong, in these communities that they belong to, where they have family members, where they have friends, and where they have created their own communities of survival. I think it's absolutely despicable to say that we should follow the path of history in institutionalizing the kinds of resources that they need, that is proven to only isolate and alienate people further and absolutely crush their psyche in ways that we can even begin to comprehend, and that I can, and that other homeless people, or I'm not homeless, but I've been in extreme proximity to, as Miguel Arias has pointed out, you recognize the extreme detriment that that has on someone's psyche, and what's even worse is the isolation and alienation that comes with being institutionalized in facilities like the Pavarello House. I was recently there. Those are not conditions that are by any means preferable to feeling secure in a community, feeling like you have the care and the generosity of people around you. And I don't think that the interests of anyone like the Rescue Mission will provide any substantial alternative to something that is much deeper rooted in the greed and the negligence of the city, in absolutely abandoning any prospects for affordable or, for affordable housing or shelter, for absolutely failing to, to, to provide any kind of substantial care that doesn't relegate towards isolating people. I think that this ordinance, or this resolution, or whatever it is, is, and, and I, I really like the point that was just brought up. It's not about the 20,000, it's about the fact that this will isolate people, and this will deprive people of the freedom to choose how they get help. And I absolutely believe that once you relegate, going to these institutions as their only option, then you deprive them of that ability to choose for themselves who they want help from and from who it's best. Because the point was brought up that, you know, the people that are giving to panhandlers and helping in every way that they can with their generosity don't know what's best for them, but I'm sure that we can agree that in the moment, in what their current needs are, as what was brought up, that the people who are panhandling know what's best. And I think it's a gross overstep to say that we have to essentially relegate people to, I'd even compare them to concentration camps in their extreme, just, just horrible conditions and, and the vile conditions of life that are there, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Cruz. Next is Matt Dildine, and then after that, we will continue to have public comment.
Good afternoon, council members, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. You know, when we got involved, when we got involved, we had heard about the, the sign and the potential opportunity for people to text and give. You know, our first, our first reaction to that is when we, we came to discuss it was, you know, we believe, we believe in the message, we believe in the message of, of really thinking before you give. And that doesn't mean not giving. My personal philosophy is, is I believe that all people can be ministers of the gospel, and that if, and if your faith tells you to, that you see someone in need, and you want to give something to pray with that person, or to create a relationship with that person, to get them to seek services, well, then there's nothing that I'm going to do to stop. Unfortunately, the flip side is something that we deal with on a regular basis, which is dealing with those that are really struggling with addiction. And the street, and this is, we could spend a whole nother day talking about this, the availability of drugs, the, what that happens is, is really, is really crazy. And that, that doesn't mean there are not legitimate uses for, for people on the street. I'm, I'm not saying that anybody that, that has panhandled is always getting drugs, that's, that's not at all the, the case, and that's not the message I want to convey. But the hard part for us, and we, we just have to recognize this as a city, is the street is incredibly dangerous. I agree with everything that Dez said and, and those names. It is incredibly dangerous, and, and we know through anecdotal evidence and statistics that so many people that do panhandle are, are getting income, or they're receiving income for, for those uses. And again, it's, I, I, I'm the CEO of a faith-based organization. I don't get, I don't have to make policy decisions like you guys, so I just get to say, you know what? We just want to help. I specifically, the Fresno Rescue Mission has never taken funding from the city of Fresno. We're in the process of opening up 200 low-barrier shelter beds. I submitted an RFP two weeks ago with the county. I requested $0 from the county for that. When this, when this come up, when this came up, I said, hey, don't, you don't need to give the money to us, we just want to help, okay? And so we just, what we wanted to do was just to offer a number, where if somebody did need help, as, as the woman before me was, was saying, is if somebody did need help, we just wanted to offer a place where people can go. And there's a lot of misunderstandings about what that actually looks like, and so if I could, I just want to take a moment to describe that process and what it looks like, and maybe that would alleviate some of the concerns in the community, and possibly maybe even cause some people to use those services. What happens when somebody calls us, when somebody calls us, is that we can, we can go pick you up, or if you were to come to us and, and at our 24/7 locations. And from there, you, no questions asked, you get a place to stay, and you get a meal if you need it. The following day, we just ask how we can, can we help? And that is a variety of different options, everything from reconcile with family, a place to catch up on maybe, to, to save up for some rent, triaging you to, to literally two dozen different programs, some faith-based and some not. I apologize, my, my time is up, but I wanted to-
No, you can continue, because, can I ask?
Sure. In that program, it's different from, from the program side that we have, which is faith-based. Under those, our, our triage or our low-barrier shelter, there's no chapel service requirement. You don't have to memorize the books of the Bible, and we work with you on an individualized basis to find you what the appropriate place is to go. And so, and so with this, with this number, alls we wanted to do is say, look, if somebody is out there that needs help, we just said, look, you can call that number, and we're going to do our very best to try and help you. And I can't commit to anything more than that.
Do you guys-
We're going to do our very best to try and help. That's it.
I have a question. Do you guys take in LGBT folks?
Yes, we do, actually. Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Okay, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
If we need something else, question wise, we'll call you back up. Thank you. Those, oh, we have one more card. The last name is just a letter G. I can't quite read the front, first word. It starts, it looks like S M I. Sorry about that, sir.
That's okay. Council President Caprioli, how does Caprioli go?
Perfect.
Do I pronounce the G or not?
No. You did it just perfect. Thanks.
And council members, my name is Smiley, so my handwriting is bad, sorry about that. Smiley G. Okay, um, do we start now?
Yes, you're going.
Okay.
We'll start you right now.
Proverbs 1917 says, whoever is kind to the poor lends to the Lord. Proverbs 1431, whoever oppresses the poor shows contempt for their maker. But I like Proverbs 229, the generous will be blessed, for they share their food with the poor. So, three weeks ago, we were here with the Stop Ordinance, which Councilmember Rando said that it was about pedestrian safety and about traffic issues. The real issue was the homeless panhandling, right? Now, Councilmember Betterfield brought it to our attention, how can we alleviate this problem? I appreciate Councilmember Arias's humanitarian approach, open ears, and I understand the concern that businesses may not want to see, you know, panhandlers on, on Hernan and Blackstone, right? But I also resonate with previous speakers here that say, you know, this $20,000, right? And for a city that almost went bankrupt just a while ago, $20,000, why don't we use that for something tangible to help the homeless, right? I understand that. But really, these signs, what, what I saw, right? What kind of message are we sending? I think if the businesses want the signs, let them purchase the signs for a few hundred dollars or so. Let them put the signs in front of their businesses, and let's see how their business clientele changes. They might be surprised to find that people don't want to see these signs because people want to give still, right? And that was the issue last time. People don't want their freedom to give, right? To be, to be taken away. But not only that, we, and here in Fresno, and I just moved here, we don't want to be known as a city that doesn't give, right? So if we just look at the visual art here at this, on this sign, help us, help Fresno, that's nice. It's a good message. Contribute to the solution, do not give to panhandlers, and then real bottom, give to local charities. Well, you know, I don't think the sign should be on public places, let the, you know, let the businesses promote it. But maybe if they change the sign and said, contribute to the solution, give to local charities. Put that in bold, because as our last speaker just said, he wants to help out. So helping out, give to local charities, okay, but when we give to people on the street, we're giving to them at the margin. They need it right then and there. Like other speakers have said, we see people in the city dying, right? So we're going to have a cognitive dissonance here when we want to give, but then we feel bad about doing so. I don't think we need that in this culture in Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you, Smiley. That's the last of the cards, but we still, anyone in the, in the chamber that wishes to address this issue, you may do so at this time. Please come forward and give us your name and address, and, okay. We'll bring it back up here. I have Member Chavez, Member Soria, the only two punched up. So Member Chavez, it's your opportunity.
Thank you, President Caprioli. So here we are again. Three weeks ago, we had this conversation in a little bit different context. I, I think my name was on the other side at the time, and that was a very educational process, I do have to tell you that. But I do want to thank my colleagues for attempting to, to fix a, a challenge that we have in the city. I think, you know, and I was doing a little bit of reflecting after that situation, and I want to thank Mike for meeting with me afterwards, and Dez, and Brian, I think he ended up leaving, and him sharing his story about his family member suit and what that's like for folks in the street. And after I had that discussion, I, I made a commitment to incorporate your input into the comprehensive homeless plan, and I stand by that. We're going to be doing that, and I also heard Councilmember Arias put that on the table and offer that, and so we will be doing that. But I'm going to say something that you usually don't hear coming up here from council members, and, and I think this is what's at the root of the problem that we're discussing today. And I think at some point, somebody has to say that, that our biggest problem at the city of Fresno is that we don't have credibility when it comes to helping the homeless. We don't have credibility because we've spent the last decade passing laws that has addressed the symptoms of the issues, the underlying issues, and not really the root cause. And, you know, I've had this conversation with my other colleagues, and, and I do agree with something that Mike said, and I think we need to look at what ordinances in the past were, were made and really are not even being used. I think the chief mentioned that a couple of times three weeks ago, when he came up and spoke and talked about the enforcement and the practicality of some of those ordinance. And, and I do think that that needs to be part of the broader conversation, because we keep trying to address a comprehensive, deep, challenging problem with more superficial solutions, and, and I think the time to transcend that is, is done. And I know that even my colleagues today that are presenting this believe that and feel that way. I don't want anybody out there to think that there's some kind of an evil intent or, or malice behind doing this. What, what we get, and I hope you can appreciate, is that we get a number of calls from constituents, oftentimes folks that, you know, really don't see those challenges that we see every single day, but they see them in their own neighborhoods. And, and I think we've come at a point in the city of Fresno where we have to start tackling problems in a comprehensive manner. And I'm, and I'm, hopefully, my colleagues are, are hearing this, and we won't be dealing with another small ordinance, but rather a comprehensive homeless program here in the next couple of weeks, because I think the time is now. I know that our RFPs are currently going out, they will be going out in the next month or so. And so we'll have, believe I mentioned last time, we had $3.1 million for the one-time funds, 2.3, I believe, for the ESG and the HUD dollars, and then the other resources that we put on the table. I think that is not going to be the silver bullet, so to speak, but it's going to be a good start on really getting these folks into support and services that they need. And I say that as somebody that has gone through an educational process, but that's how we're going to build trust and really show that we are credible when it comes to addressing the homeless issue, because if we don't do that, then there's always going to be this skepticism of your, of the intent behind our actions and proposals that we bring to the table. And I'm going to say this, because I, I led the effort last year, I, I do believe that we need to, we need to build and establish that low-barrier shelter. That's really at the heart of us having credibility in the city of Fresno, where if we don't have that, there's always going to be that skepticism where folks say, you don't really have an interest in helping people because you don't put your money where your mouth is. And, and so with that, I like to put a couple of things on the table for consideration for my colleagues that, you know, because I do believe that, that I, I still have some questions about the, the expenses on the $20,000 and where that will come from, but we can, you know, have a conversation about that. But what I would like to do is that, that should this pass, we don't put those signs up until we implement that comprehensive homeless plan, along with services, with housing, with the triage center, with substance abuse, and that we also include the advocates' input into the plan, because I think that's what's been lacking the last decade. And if you all recall, I've had some very robust conversations with organizations where we were supposed to end homelessness in 10 years, and that document's come and gone, and here we are again, having the same conversation. And you're right, Mike, I did say those words, that we can't keep doing the same thing over and over and expect different results. And then another thing I like to see is working in here, somehow we include PSAs into not just homeless awareness, but more importantly, on the solutions, and how do we actually encourage charity? And we encourage giving, obviously those pointed towards the services and the comprehensive approach that we have. And so with that, I'd love to hear what my colleagues have to say, and, and I too, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, to ideas, to whatever this looks like, but I hope you can appreciate that as policymakers, we get a number of calls, and we're just trying to, we're just trying to fix the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, excuse me, is Member Soria, followed by Member Sparza, followed by Member Miguel.
Thank you, Council President. So I will be very honest, I'm, I'm a little disappointed that we're here today again, having a very similar conversation, a little bit different, but I think much more similar than what we had a few weeks ago. I'm actually reminded, it takes me kind of back to three weeks when Nancy Greaser was speaking to us, and she had her little pig on the paper, and, you know, she mentioned lipstick on a pig. I'm just kind of reminded of those words. So let me be clear, while I'm not opposed to us attempting to- While I'm not opposed to us attempting to decreasing dangerous panhandling issues or criminal issues that may derive from this, I know that the business community and there's business owners that may have some issues and want, you know, some of these issues to be resolved along certain business corridors. And I certainly have no issue with encouraging people to donate to charities. I just personally wish that it was coming from a place that felt likely to actually inspire people to actually care, instead of continuing to kick people while they're down in their luck. The message on these signs is not positive. Just take a look at it, and I think it's a perfect example. I've actually provided some other alternative signs that I think lend a little bit of a more positive sign. I worry how the rationale might be used in the hands of those that are already predisposed to hurtful stigmatization of those experiencing true homelessness. What I see from the sign that is being proposed, some unintended consequences, and let's talk about those. Because there is really no way to know if the person you encounter really is homeless, has a sick child, or a family they need to care for, or is a veteran, as some of those signs claim. There's also no way to know if the panhandler one encounters is actually going to use the money that one gives them to purchase something legitimate, like food or medicine, or use alcohol and drugs. We just even heard, there's really no data, maybe some anecdotal data, but no real data to support that. It also, what I believe, I think the sign, the whole ring and with the cross, you know, the red, and the sign that you guys see over here to my left, I think there's another one over here, I think really discourages folks and sends a wrong message, like it's illegal to give. I think those signs are usually used when something is illegal to do. So I think that it's a misrepresentation of maybe what is being attempted to be done, which is why I have a different perspective on this. I don't believe this is the way to go. You know, in fact, I got, I put out, you know, again, on social media, kind of to get some response from folks, because I think that there's merit to some degree, right, as to what we're trying to do, but also, we have to recognize that this is not the right solution. It's another Band-Aid to the real issue that, you know, my council colleagues so eloquently explained. I got a number of emails, calls, you can go on my social media, mostly opposed to this, I think, in line kind of with the residents that are here today. You know, I'm going to go also back to a couple months ago. I actually was very proud of this council because a few months ago, we worked very hard with the administration, and, you know, we had our challenges, but we finally got to a plan that we believed was the right plan to move our city forward and would be a comprehensive plan to attempt to end homelessness. We approved money for low barrier shelter. We even said, "Let's create a jobs program for folks." I know jobs, those jobs programs actually have been very successful in other cities like Albuquerque, in Texas, and so forth. We also said, "Hey, we need resources for shelters for families and children." We said, "We need to make sure that there's resources for the youth." Those were all great things, but guess what, guys? We haven't yet implemented, and we're not there yet. So what I would also say is that if we truly wanted to do an educational campaign, and I think I was reminded, right now, we were reminded by Eileen, these signs would be in multiple languages, and we would actually be trying to do true PSAs in the community. Rescue Mission, Pavarello, Marjorie Mason Center should be partnering and doing these PSAs to educate our entire community on the various media outlets, to let know folks about the issue and how they can actually help the homeless. That's what I would say. So what I want to ask my colleagues today is that, one, you know, a couple different options. I would ask my colleagues to reconsider moving forward today, rather wait and see the rollout of the low barrier shelter, the job program, and then bring it back and see if, with all this stuff rolled out, we begin to see a mitigation of the panhandling issue. Otherwise, if you guys want to move forward today, I would consider the following for those who want to support these efforts. I don't know if I'm ready to support this unless I see significant changes. I think the, some of the alternative signs are out there, so I would encourage my colleagues to consider. It says, "Change the way you give." It doesn't talk about panhandlers in a negative way. I think that we should be trying to inspire our community to give in a different way, not make it so negative. So a couple things. I think folks brought up very, very important points. Don't use taxpayer money for this. We've done an excellent job in doing, raising money for the student cupboard, for swim lessons, for kids in low-income neighborhoods, even for the veterans memorial. So if you guys are going to do this, go out and raise the money. The chamber is here, they're supportive of that. Have the businesses also maybe post those signs, as was suggested by a gentleman back there. I would also urge my colleagues to remove the negative message, the negative language in the design, and do it more positive, like the examples that I propose here. And I would also agree that they shouldn't get posted until that homelessness plan has rolled out. And I think finally, and I think the time is way overdue, we've seen the Supreme Court bring down a decision about anti-camping ordinance, they're unenforceable. I think if we truly want to be, bring credibility, as mentioned by my council colleague, Luis Chavez, to the way that we treat the homeless and the way that we're going to solve the homelessness crisis that exists here in our community, that we are leaders by reversing that horrible, horrible ordinance that not only sent the wrong message to our community, dehumanized the homeless individuals that are our neighbors, that are our parents, that are our uncles, that are our friends. And so I would, I would call on my colleagues to do that, to begin to develop and to bring credibility to this body when solving the issues of homelessness. Thank you.
Member Sparza.
Thank you, Council President. You know, though it's apparent that homelessness in itself definitely is an issue that touches many aspects of life in our city, we experience every day, I'm just still not convinced that panhandling in itself is a legitimate policy issue that we should be taking on in this matter. I'm not sure if there's any research or data showing that people giving money to homeless people is actually prolonging them, prolonging the homelessness. But even beyond that, just on a matter of principle, I don't want us to be that community with weird signs all over the place, trying to solve a problem that is really beyond any Band-Aid solution. I know that in my district, we have enough things that, you know, we have enough things in my district that bring down our property values already. And I don't think I want, at least from what I've seen today, any of the signs, the different options posted all over my district. I commend my colleagues on what I think is a very well-meaning resolution. I think their hearts are in the right place. I think we just have a healthy, respectful disagreement on this particular matter and a different perspective on what constitutes a legitimate policy issue here in the city of Fresno. And I would agree with my council colleague, Soria, that if we want to show we're serious about tackling the homeless issue, let's take a step back, come forward with a comprehensive plan, and possibly start with the repeal of the constitutionally unenforceable and the ineffective provisions of the anti-camping ordinance.
Thank you. Member Brettafield? I think the screen is clear. I didn't see you punch up. Oh, I'm sorry. You still haven't fixed that yet.
Yeah, no worries. So colleagues, here's what I've heard thus far. I think I've heard at least three of you express interest in making sure that we fully, that we have an opportunity to fully implement the HEAP plan for opening of the low-barrier shelters before we move forward with this proposal. I've also heard some of you suggest that we can make improvements in the sign language. Some of you present that we could look at alternative sources that are not public in nature. And I've also heard, which I'm in complete agreement, that we have a lot of making up to do with our credibility in the community of Fresno as it involves our homeless community. And I think part of making up for past sins is to make it right, and that would include dealing with the anti-camping ordinances that was passed a while back that we have determined to be completely ineffective and not applicable to our city, given the constitutional challenges that it presents. Those are all things I'm willing to consider if my colleagues are willing to accept those changes. As I told in the beginning, our goal here is to present a solution that's positive, one that we know is simply one step in many to come, that takes us in the right direction and that allows us to make up for past sins against a community that wasn't equipped to defend itself. So for my other two council colleagues that joined me in drafting this initial proposal, I ask you for your response and feedback based on the suggestions and the input that we've received from the council.
Thank you. Member Brettafield?
Yes. As far as the PSAs, I'm all in favor. I mean, we want to educate people, so to what Councilmember Chavez said, no problem at all. In terms of the HEAP plan, I'm on the subcommittee along with Councilmember Arias and Chavez. We're committing the $3.1 million. We sat down, we decided this is the best way to fund it, having triage centers and things of that sort. I fully support that as well. And so that's moving forward regardless of the sign. A lot of criticism of the anti-no camping ordinance. I voted for, I'm proud of it. I know it's worked in my district. When we've had people who have been camping out, we've notified the police, and it's been effective. Now, you've had court cases that have made it more difficult. They like to tie our hands in terms of doing anything about this problem, but I find it interesting that people are up here criticizing. That's fine. You guys weren't here, you didn't vote for it. I voted for it, proud of it.
Well, councilmember, they all come down to my district, they hang out at the canals, the railroads, and the freeways, so that's why it's been effective up in your area.
It's an effective ordinance, and I'm proud to have supported it. And should it go away, and quite possible, I guess it could, when we have a council member in District Two, we'll see the impact of that. I know a lot of people don't mind if Fresno becomes another San Francisco and LA. I care whether we become another San Francisco or LA. I don't want encampments everywhere. I don't want them at the canals. I don't want them in the parks. I think our constituents have a right to live in a, in a, in a, in a community where they don't have to be afraid, where there aren't public safety hazards, and I think frankly, it's inhumane for people to sleep on the streets. I don't think we should be okay about that. We should never be okay about that. And, you know, cities that care don't allow it. Don't say that it's okay. Cities like San Francisco say it's okay, and you can't even walk on the street because people are sleeping on the street, and they're defecating in the street, and they're shooting up with drugs, and there's needles all over the place. That's not going to happen as long as I'm here. So this is an effort to try to avoid some of those problems, and we know, you saw it from professionals on a video, that said, "Giving money to people who are out in the street begging is not helping them. It's not helping them." And all of us are elected to address this problem. And just ignoring it by saying, "Well, I don't like the circle, it's got a thing, it's negative," this can't get any more positive. This has been the input of people, Councilman Arias, Chief Dyer, and others. To make this "Help us help Fresno, contribute to the solution" is a positive message. So as far as the $20,000, if you're very worried about the $20,000, I'm happy to take it out of my infrastructure budget and pay for these signs. Not a problem. It's a good use of the money, and I'm willing to do it. So we should do it. You have my commitment that that's how we'll pay for the signs. Our businesses expect us to do something about it, and ignoring this problem and thinking that one solution is just having the HEAP funds and spending that money, that's going to be a help, but this is a multifaceted, complex problem that needs a number of solutions. And that's part of it, and this is part of it. And if you think that that's going to be the panacea, it's not. There has been no one solution in any community, in any state. It's a problem throughout the nation, and every city is battling it. And this is another effort. And I find it absolutely astonishing, some of the nonsense and gibberish I hear about positive signs and negative signs. Your people in your district demand that you do something about this problem, and you have never been in supportive, and I saw your Facebook post, and it was negative. It was toned in an effect. You don't support this, I understand that. But we need to do something about this problem. This is a positive solution, so I will address the $20,000. Let's do the PSAs, and I move forward with my motion.
Thank you. Thank you. I think I feel one that hasn't really made a comment, and I don't think the $3.1 million and this signage are mutually exclusive. I think we need to have both, and actually many more facets, to solve this issue, or at least contribute to solving it. I'm not sure it can ever be solved, but I don't see them as mutually exclusive ideas. And I think the signage is very positive. I think we all worked very hard on that to make it as neutral as possible, but yet get the message across. So I am happy to support the motion, and we're ready to vote in a couple of minutes. So Member Chavez, you're up next.
Just, and I appreciate the dialogue that we're having, because I think, you know, we've had a number of people come and speak, and a lot of people have said, "Why are you, why are you spending so much time discussing this? It's a waste of time." And I disagree with that, because I think for the first time in a very long time, we're actually having a substantive conversation about homelessness and how to address this. And I think you're starting to see a shift from the city council where we want to address it in a comprehensive manner and not piecemeal it. And, you know, Councilmember Brettafield, I asked this question, and I hope you don't interpret it to mean that's argumentative or anything, but how would the signs, how would the signs get people that are hooked on substance abuse off of them? I honestly do struggle with, with that approach that we've taken recently, because I just don't see that. I just don't see that.
Okay. Here's, here's how it does. When you give people who are addicted to drugs money, and that's what was said on the video, that's what the professionals say, what do they do with it? They're going to get more drugs. When they don't have that ability to buy drugs, hopefully, they start seeking treatment. We know this in my field as a psychologist. It's called codependency, and if you're just helping people continue that lifestyle, it's going to keep them in that lifestyle. And that's what well-meaning, well-intentioned people, because they want to help somebody who's out on the street, give them money, but it doesn't help them. It keeps them addicted. And by having this kind of a campaign that educates the public that giving people money who are out on the street keeps them out on the street, I can't make it any more simple than that. That's what it is.
And so, and so if I accept your contention that that's the case, and those folks don't have money, somebody that, and you're a psychologist, you know that, somebody that is addicted to drugs, how do you think they're going to get resources to buy that drug if they don't have panhandling money?
They're not, if they don't have the money, they're not going to get the drug. And what we want them to do is go into treatment, where they can get some help.
That's the part that I've struggled with it, but I just want to land this, because I know we've talked about this. So you would agree to pay for the, for the signage that we're discussing?
Yes.
You do agree to the PSAs?
Absolutely.
Encouraging people to give?
It's important.
Charity work. Will you also commit to working with the advocates on developing the comprehensive plan for homelessness?
My door's open to anybody who ever wants to talk to me about how we can improve our community. That's not an issue.
And your capacity as one of the chair members of the homeless task force that we set up?
Sure, of course.
Okay.
All right. The screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. You don't pop up on the screen, my friend, I'm sorry about that.
I want to be thoughtful. I'm sorry I stepped out of the restroom for a bit. But what I've heard from my colleagues is they'd like us to delay implementation of the initiative until the shelters and the triage centers that we approved go forward. Is that still the request of my colleagues?
I just had one question. What is the date of ETA estimated time?
I think we're about two months away from awarding the funds, and then it'll take some time to actually open the shelters, right, Councilmember Chavez?
Yeah, and you know, one of, one of the things that I wanted to establish today is that this isn't the end of the conversation, and that we actually, you know, work with the community. I'm willing to support what I'm willing to support what, you know, we just discussed, and working with advocacy, we're doing the PSAs, and with, you know, Councilmember Brettafield volunteering to pay for the signs. But I, but again, I think that's just, that's just a piece of it. To me, the, the bulk of this work, and really the important piece, is going to be the comprehensive homeless plan, i.e. the low-barrier shelter. I think, once we have that, that's going to be really the, the establishment of credibility with, with the city.
Very good.
I agree with that.
I'm sorry. Everyone's done, I presume.
I'm not done, councilmembers. So I'm trying to be extremely thoughtful, that this can't simply be a divisive vote on Mexico Council, so I'm trying to make enough adjustments that we can all feel comfortable and walk away that we're all able to meet halfway. Here's what, what I still have concern with. Some of my colleagues have made reasonable requests. The language isn't as accepting as, for some as for others. So what I would like to suggest to the makers of the motion is to allow individual council members to adjust language that they feel is more appropriate for themselves, especially since we have to potentially translate the language to different, the signs to different languages. That language doesn't necessarily translate all that well in Spanish or in Mongh, so I want to be thoughtful of that. Secondly, I do want to be very explicit that it's going to take us time to get this program up, up and running, but that we should first ensure that the shelters are ready and open before we put up the signs. So I think those are two reasonable requests, in addition to the PSAs, in addition to working with any advocates that want to come to the table, for us to be able to move this forward in a more reasonable approach. So the two makers of motions are open to that, then I think we can move forward.
I, I don't think it needs to wait, and it may take 30, 60 days, I don't know how long shelters are going to take, number one. Number two, what is it you would propose to remove from that, Councilman Arias?
It's not so much what I propose to remove, Councilmember Brettafield, it's what other council members may want to adjust.
Well, they're not supportive of it, so they've already said it. You are supportive of it, you've said, "This is part of your motion, and this is part of your proposal." So what are you willing to, to remove? Because I, I don't want to remove anything, because I think the message is very positive. Are you wanting to remove the circle? Are you wanting to remove, say no to panhandling? What is it you're wanting to remove?
All right, let's take a moment, breathe deep, and regain our thoughts, and let's, let's have a cordial discussion. Member Arias.
What I would like, councilmember, is to have the flexibility when I translate the signs into Spanish and Mongh, to be able to select, select the language on those signs. I would also like any other council member who would like the signs changed, to be able to do that. I think we all are very acute about our respective districts, and the circle, the line across may not be all that accepting in parts of my district, and I don't, the last thing I want is the signage to be offensive to any neighborhood in the city of Fresno, so I think it's, we should allow for flexibility.
Okay, what I would tell you then, that is, I'm very comfortable with that sign. If you would like to change it for your district, you're more than welcome to change it for your district. If you want to put it in Mongh, Spanish, or 14 languages, I'm perfectly okay with that, if that's what you want to do.
So I think what you're saying under motion is that each district can select the manner of communicating the message?
Absolutely.
In the language of their preference, or more than one language.
Absolutely.
They may have, may have one or two or three or four signs, whatever suits their particular, unique district.
Absolutely, and if you want to delay putting out the sign, you're welcome to do that for me. I, my constituents are demanding that we do something, and I feel the need to get this going. So if you want to delay, I support that. I don't. If you want to change the sign in some way, I welcome you to do that for your districts.
So that's part of our motion?
That's the motion.
I would continue my second. Under those circumstances, that seems to at least appease most of the concerns up here, but we need to get this to a vote fairly quickly, and last comments, anyone? Good. So, we have the motion, does anyone have a question?
Oh, sorry, I punched up, I don't know if I came up.
Oh, you did come up, okay. You're close to 20 minutes, my, my colleague.
Thank you. Using up my time since I didn't have presentations this morning. So, I, I appreciate the robust conversation and the passion behind the proposal, and, you know, I respect my council colleague Brettafield for the desire that he has to address, you know, the issue that is at hand here. I think, you know, and I appreciate Councilman Arias trying to find some middle ground, but I think that when you allow signs that say one thing in North Fresno, and signs that say another thing in South Fresno, it begins to beg the question of, "We're creating a divisive message in our community." I can't support that. I, I can support a message that is positive. If you guys would be willing to standardize the sign, that would, you know, say, as we had posted earlier, contribute to the solution, change the way you give, and then have the phone number for, for, you know, the, the line where, or the website where we want folks to go to, I think that's a different story. But again, changing it in that way, I think, again, creates a divisive rhetoric that, at this time, we don't need here in the city of Fresno. Thank you.
Very good, I, so I think the motion remains, that it's district by district. Language, message, time you post it, whatever is appropriate for each of our districts, we can do that. So there's no time limits or restrictions.
Councilmembers.
Council members, that they do have to buy their district. So, Member Arias?
Council President, can I just point out the obvious?
I'm sorry, you did punch up.
I'm sorry, can I, can I just point out the obvious? I think that it might be confusing to our residents if we have a different, if we're trying to do a marketing or messaging campaign, and the signs are different, different in every district, that might be confusing and not as impactful. Just pointing out the obvious.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we...
Councilmembers, if I may, as I told you, I started this conversation with, with an open mind and open ears, and as I've thought through this notion of every council member gets to adjust language, it actually goes against the notion that we're one city, and that we're giving our residents one message, and our visitors one message. So if we're unwilling to compromise on some simple language that's acceptable to six individuals up here, I can't support the item at this time. So I know, Councilmember Brettafield, you and I have had this conversation, but giving our community a different and distinctly, different message, based on where you live, where you drive, where you shop, I think would do more damage to our collective psyche than it would do to help us. So I would ask that we just take some more time and bring this back, and see if we can come up with some more positive language, because, councilmembers, we, we came down this path with the primary goal to have a positive message, and I don't want to leave here with six or seven different messages around charity. So I think it's best if we just spend another week or two trying to figure out a unified message. I think we've heard from some of the colleagues up here, we all want to do the right thing, but I don't want to add to the confusion, or to the feeling that there's different expectations of quality of life, of charitable giving, and of what we feel for those most in need, based on the geography of our city. So if it stays as this, I'm not going to continue supporting it.
So our last comment will be from the originator of the motion, Member Brettafield, then we're going to vote.
Councilman Arias, you worked with me on this for two weeks, we've made changes for you to make it positive, you supported bringing this forward, you said there might be people who want to change the language. In essence, you've, I guess, been disingenuous about this whole process, because we made it as positive, and you supported it, you knew what it was, bringing it forward, and now you then made an effort to say, "Well, let's move it in, in people's districts, you can change it." We said, "Okay, that's not good enough, you want to put it in 14 different languages?" You said, "You want to put it in your district? Go ahead." You've not been in favor of this, you've been disingenuous from the, from the get-go, and I'm going to call you out on it, and unfortunately, you and your colleagues who don't support something as simple as this, which is a positive message, as expressed by Chief Dyer, as expressed by the mayor, as expressed by people who work in this field, is a very sad commentary. I would say, let's call for the motion.
I have a call for the question, we'll do this electronically, and the motion is to do the variety, as I understand it, by district. Say, so whatever you want to do per district is the discretionary of the council member who is elected to represent that district. So the motion does not carry for a lack of a majority vote. So...
The President Capriolio, if it is the will of the council members, I'm willing to bring this back with some improvements to the messaging, so we can have a six-o at the next meeting. If it is the will, the interest of people to actually sit down and refine this a little better.
You know, you have that prerogative, that's the last matter of business we're going to adjourn. Thank you all.